We are now live.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Rosa City Schools Board meeting for Wednesday, September 16, 2020. And let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I can hear Jill's voice coming loud and clear.
Couch voice.
You don't need a, you don't need a microphone. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here on the special board meeting where we've got some, as usual, big things ahead of us, particularly things that are making people very, very anxious again. So as I've been talking to people and to just staff and admin and students and parents, we're talking about, you know, anxiety and emotionality. And we need to just make sure that we are making the best decision together. We're looking at all the unintended consequences that are just not staring us smack in the face. And believe me, there's 360 degrees worth of unintended consequences. So I'm bored tonight. We're going to put on our wisest caps and try to make our best decision ever. As usual. Okay. So thank you. There are no actions taken in closed session and there's no public comment on agenda items only. So we'll be doing that during the agenda items.
Yes.
So we're going to start with the discussion action items tonight. And the first one is a discussion item. It's number one, D1, Attendance Boundary Adjustment Process Update. So I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Kitamora.
Thank you, President Fong. Good evening, everyone. We are bringing back this item after some of the discussion that occurred at the last board meeting for the board to take a look at an amended timeline, some adjustments to the members of the committees. And so I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson. And we also will have Larry Furchaw from Strategic Demographer stuff and Larry Milton, Larry, no, Milton Foster from our legal team at F3. So Rick, I hope you're there behind that little boy face to take over and lead this discussion. Okay, here comes Milton and there is Rick and there is Larry.
All right. I believe you handed it off to me, Diana. I apologize for being a moment late.
No problem.
Good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Kitamora. Tonight, we're bringing back a discussion item on the process for school district boundaries. Specifically, the item that we brought to the board at the August 26 meeting where we laid out a timeline to look at middle and high school boundaries and bring back a recommendation in December or more likely January of 2021 that would impact the 2122 school year. Tonight, we are bringing an update to that plan after further discussion and in consultation with Milton Foster from our legal team and Larry Furchaw from Cooperative Strategies, who is helping us with the the boundaries and doing some demographic work for us. But we really began to realize that it would probably best serve us at this point to look at this in two phases. With phase one, addressing school of residents for Cook Middle School as it is currently slated to become part of CCLA for the 2122 school year. And extending boundaries of three of our middle schools to encompass those students of residence in the Cook attendance area in order to provide them with a traditional school, traditional neighborhood school that they could attend. Also important to note that with the CCLA campus and access to that or enrollment at CCLA, there would be priority given to those students that resided in the Cook attendance boundary as it stands today. With that, we made several changes to what our core group would look like for the near term, as well as what our core group would look like after we completed the the boundaries for the students that would reside in the Cook Middle School boundary. And really focused phase one on that with phase two starting immediately following the first phase to address high school, middle school, and elementary schools potentially in Santa Rosa City Schools as a longer process to bring back to the board tentatively slated for October of 2021. We redid some of the core group and committee members for phase one. And then we also changed the the makeup of the the group, the committee for phase two. So with that, I will turn turn it over to Mr. Furchaw to bring up a quick presentation to discuss this. And then we'll hand it back over to the board for question and comment and additional guidance.
Rick, do you want me to share my screen?
Please.
To bear with my technical skills here. That's up on everybody's screen now. So good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Kitamora. My name is Larry Furchaw, Cooperative Strategies. Good to see everybody again. As my computer catches up to me here. Really have a quick presentation here to just facilitate the discussion on the updated plan that Mr. Edson has laid out, as well as the timelines and the committee compositions for the two different phases as we've now outlined it here. So after last month's board meeting with the board's direction to increase the robustness of the membership of the committees, given that, given the current restrictions on meetings and being in person, as well as all the other things associated with the coronavirus, it just became a challenge in our minds to try to get that all done with the timeline that we had, with the size of the committee, with the process that that would entail. So we talked that over and thought about breaking the the process up into, again, as Mr. Edson mentioned, a phase one interrelocation of the Cook Middle School attendance boundaries so that when CCLA is the sole focus of that campus, that there is a neighborhood school for the students who currently reside within the Cook Middle School boundaries. And that process would be underway with the plan completion by January 2021, probably would be finished by December with this process, within phase two kicking off thereafter for the larger review of a longer term boundary plans for all school levels with the equity lens that was talked about, that we've been talking about as well. And giving that process a good 10 months to play out. And we'll look at the calendar to see how that process would work. So with phase one, as we've proposed it, we've held one meeting of the core group already to talk about, and that occurred last week, to talk about some of the initial ideas we have for potential boundary allocation of the Cook Middle School attendance area. So we spent some time on that, got some feedback in terms of how that information can be presented, how we can look at estimates of who would actually attend the schools that they're being allocated to. We can tell you where the kids live, but it's hard to predict which school they'll choose to attend, especially when we throw into the mix the ability for them to have priority at CCLA. So we're going to look at some numbers and ranges of how we can show those. So that when we meet with the Boundary Committee, the larger Boundary Committee, later this month, we'll have those options to share. We've already begun planning some of the ideas of how we bring that group together to get their feedback in this virtual environment and use some of the tools of Zoom to to talk through the scenarios, get feedback so that we can bring back changes at subsequent meetings and refine and revise until we reach a consensus with the larger Boundary Committee sometime in probably October. Meet again with the core group to review that consensus recommendation from the larger Boundary Committee with the anticipation of bringing a recommendation from that committee to the board in November to sunshine that to both you and the public prior to some community input meetings that would be held also in November. A final core group meeting if necessary in December to review the feedback and prepare for board approval of this interim boundary, if you will, for the middle schools and really just the allocation of the Cook Middle School boundary to other boundaries for the following school year. And so the anticipation would be to have that approved by the board in December or in January. In terms of the makeup of the committee, so you can see the core group there, we included the principals from the middle schools, as well as the principal of LC Allen High School within the core group. And within the expanded full committee, we have a parent representative from each middle school, a student board member and an additional student representative. We have a representative from Santa Rosa Teachers Association from each middle school and then a representative from classified staff from each middle school. So we've expanded out the group from what we had previously presented to have teacher and classified staff member from each, as well as to have a parent from each of the middle schools. So that's a little bit of the changes that you see there at the committee for phase one. For phase two, which would be the larger boundary discussions, looking at all three school levels, looking at it through the through the lens of equity and that process, we have that starting again in in January, meeting with the core group to start looking at some options, ideas for how we would deal and adjust the boundaries through this process. And you can see here through February and March, working with that larger Boundary Committee, we have four meetings in the calendar. It doesn't limit us to four meetings. If we need more meetings, we can have more meetings. We have the time through this process. The idea was to have the recommendation ready by the end of the school year for the board to have a chance to look at, for the community to to see kind of where the committee has has landed through this process in terms of an initial recommendation. And then rather than try to get people to come out to meetings in the summer, hold that off until school starts again, put September, probably could start as early as August, depending on how how the new school year shakes out. But start the community input meeting process in the new school year and then get all that feedback, synthesize it, make any potential changes so that we can bring that to the board in October of 2021 for these larger boundary discussions that would take effect the following year, which the 2223 school year. A lot of this, we'll also have discussions with the Boundary Committee on as it relates to the phasing in of this and with the staff, with the board on a grandfathering, as well as the larger discussion that that I know we talked about at the last meeting of intra-district transfers and the policies associated with that. That would also be part of the discussions that would come back to the board by October of 2021. As far as the group for this one, see there a smaller core group. And then the the larger committee includes the principals of every school in the district, a parent representative from each school within the district, a student board member and one additional student representative, a teacher from every school in the district, a classified staff member from every school in the district, a representative from each of the feeder districts, as well as representative from the city of Santa Rosa. We talked a lot at the last meeting about some information on safe routes to schools and transportation. So we wanted to include, we haven't identified that person yet. We'll work with districts to reach out to the city to find who makes the most sense to include that process, but representatives can provide that information and that in that input through this process. But a much larger group, as you can see here, hopefully by January, we can start to meet person or figure out other ways to do this. But it's it's going to be a large group and we'll have to divide that up in a way that makes it possible. With attendance boundaries, you know, it's helpful to have something on paper in front of you when you're looking at these maps. It's hard to just flash something on the screen and for people to really get that and be able to give input real quickly about it. So that's one of the the challenges of the virtual setting and we're going to work through that. So that's one of the reasons why we thought kind of taking a step back and and breaking it up into these two phases would be helpful. I'll turn it back over if there's any questions or clarification I can provide.
Thank you, Laurie.
I see Omar's hand up. Laurie, President Fong.
Okay, so I got my screen back. So we're asking questions right now and then we'll take some public comment. Director Medina.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say I really like this plan, the phase one, phase two model. It's really good. I think it's well thought out, well designed. The one question that I do have is I wasn't clear within the discussions or the process that will be taken, it sounds like it's a lot around the boundaries, but will there also be discussion around our interdistrict transfer policies within that group? Or would that be a separate parallel discussion that we might take on?
Steve, do you want to address this or you want me to?
Sure. It will be something that we'll address separately. It's a separate board policies that we'll bring to at the appropriate time. We're opening the window up here shortly. So unless the timeline gets adjusted, we may have to bring something sooner than later.
Thank you.
Other questions, board members? See no hands. We're going to open it up for public comment. Moderator, do we have any public comments?
So this is the official call for public comment on item D1, Attendance Boundary Adjustment Process Update. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand button. And if you called in by phone, you can raise your hand by pushing star nine. Wait for your turn. We will have a new digital timer, newish timer, that will help show you how much time you have to talk. And please keep your comments under three minutes. Our first comment is Will Lyon.
Good evening, President Fong, Dr. Kitamora and members of the board. Can you hear me all right? Oh, the little green thing's going, but I don't see my picture. That's a benefit to everybody. I wanted to call in. I'm the William Lyon. I'm the president of Santa Rosa Teachers Association, representing now over 900 members, now that we got our hiring going. And I am calling in to support this plan. First, I want to point out the generous timelines. I think it's really important that for the big one, I know we got to do the the smaller first phase first, but for that bigger phase, it's going to be really difficult. And it's time sensitive because those changes are going to affect all kinds. It's going to ripple effect all across the district. So to be able to have in between now and October 2021 to decide and then have November, December, January of that previous year to implement it is really important. And I appreciate that. I want to appreciate the thoughtful process of bringing in the extra bodies and specifically bringing in CSEA and SRTA, the staff, to have members at each one of the schools. These decision, and again, I'm speaking on that second phase. The first one, I know we have to go faster. But to have a seat at the table from all of those schools is going to help us make a better decision. So thank you for hearing us on both of those things. I think we learned a lot from the Return to School Plan Process and Committee. And and that informed the MOU that we have on distance learning. We're going to talk about that later tonight. And I think, I don't know exactly, this will be exact mirroring that, but it is going to replicate that accordion model where we bring information in and then we bring it back out and we get as many people as possible to weigh in so that we have as much information as we can. I want to point out, this is a tough one. This is a, this is a tough decision because it affects so many people. People are attached to the school they thought they were going to go to. And if you change those boundaries, we are absolutely going to get some pushback. I think we're also going to get some pushback. The equity versus what we used to call white flight. I don't think white flight's the right phrase anymore. I think it's more complicated than that. But I do want to follow those of you who are talking about addressing this at the same time that we address the interdistrict transfer policies. If you change the boundaries, but you don't change the transfer policies, nothing will change. And if you do change the the transfer policies, you're going to get pushback. And there's going to be a time that we are going to need to check our values versus our dollars because people are going to threaten to leave. And we're going to have to balance that out, which is why I'm so grateful that we have the time to have the conversation and that we are going to have the bodies at the table to weigh in. So we support the plan as it is written and we're grateful for the opportunity to to have a seat at the table and to have enough time to do it right. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Our next comment will come from Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore, would you please state your full name for the record?
Listen to more RSP teacher at Colliard Comstock Middle School. And I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Furchaw for that presentation and putting so much work into the committees and feeling like having teachers and classified staff from all the other schools can be a part of that. I think that's fantastic. And thank you to Omar for bringing up intra-district transfer. I think that's also really good. And I'm really glad to see these changes. And I just, my public comment is to thank you for having this, having the community and the teachers be a part of this process.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
And there are no more hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Board members, discussion on this item. It is a discussion item. I see Director Close's hand up.
Thank you, President Fong. Thank you, administration, for coming up with a a longer timeline for the greater boundary changes. I think that is good and for providing more opportunity for for public input and and participation on the on the committees. I am I would like to suggest that we actually do a little bit more of that, that we instead of, that we consider and discuss tonight in our discussion, instead of doing a phased approach, that we do one long approach and and do it all together. And the reason I suggest that is I think doing the phased approach, while it was, it's well intentioned to deal with you know, kind of what's before us right now, but then make sure that our our boundaries are good in the long run. That it's going to just create a little bit more uncertainty in our student body and our and our student families. And and really end up taking more time, staff time, than than we can afford right now because they think staff is is stretched too thin. And at the same time, it's going to give more opportunity for input, for really genuine input on the whole process in a, I think, a sort of more more coherent way. So, you know, the only downside to that is that CCLA will share a campus with Cook for one more year. They seem to have been doing a pretty good job with that. And I don't, I don't see the downside to that compared to having a really strong district-wide process. I think one more thing in terms of participation, and and I advocated for this last time, is that I'd actually like to see more representation on the committees, maybe through the work of subcommittees, have more teachers, have more parents, have more classified members, more people involved. And I think if we do one big process rather than two-phase processes, that can be more efficient and we can have more folks, more voices involved in that process. So I'd like to offer that for consideration by my colleagues. And and with that, I will end my first comment.
All right. Director Sheffield and then Director Medina.
Thank you. I I'm not going to repeat much of what Director Close had brought up. I would consider a maybe a one step longer approach as long as it allows for more input. I think that it would do that. I do like this process. I think that the the timeline is realistic. We have identified stakeholders, but I think that we can do better in greater collaboration. We have nothing to lose. And we have an extended timeline, then this is an opportunity for us to to reach out to more folks in the community that 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 need to be heard. We need to stay committed to our teachers and classified along every step of the way. It goes without saying that this approach includes that. I love that. And I am, lastly, I just want to say that I'm thrilled that we have student board members that will be, their voice will be represented on this too, because it's, you know, it's really is about about them and it's really about students and the future of students. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Sheffield. Let's go to Director Medina and then after that, Director De La Cruz.
I think I was going to say that, you know, I'm very supportive of the model as it's designed right now. I think the process has already started. I think staff has put a lot of effort into it. Simultaneously, I think that in in doing this process, we'll learn from from the process, the short-term process, and that once phase two kicks in and it expands to a much larger group of people, we'll we'll have lessons that we have learned as to what might work and what could be done better from doing this first phase one. So, you know, when this was initially presented to me, I was like, oh, wait, why are we doing this? But but it's, I I've gone behind it because I think it's a much better approach. I think it does allow us to address some of the immediate concerns that we need to do while at the same time not not looking at everything that we want to accomplish in the long term in in too quick of a fashion and allowing the opportunity for a lot of, some of the concerns that Director Close has mentioned in terms of people wanting, potentially having some pushback or or questions as to what school they might go to being addressed, some of those things being addressed within the committees as as the process moves forward. So I I'm opposed to changing the process from what's being presented. I think it's well designed, well thought out, and and I suggest we continue moving forward with it.
Thank you, Director Medina. Director De La Cruz.
I just want to kind of lift up something that I heard President Lyon say around, you know, wanting to make sure that this is an integrated approach with board policies. Board policy changes around intra-district transfers also being addressed with the lines being redrawn. And so, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm slightly of two minds right now about the kind of phase one, phase two. I frankly think that, you know, if we're adding in board policies and if we're really wanting to do this, you know, pretty transformational adjustment of boundaries in our in our district, that's going to take, it's going to take time. And so I don't necessarily want to kind of shoehorn us into, you know, a process that that does it in phases that might push too soon on the front end and then kind of create more churn on the back end. I'm just, I'm, you know, especially if we are, I I hope, considering board policy at the same time that we're looking at the district boundary changes. I think that's a big, that's a big lift in front of us and will require, especially in a COVID world, you know, a lot of extra effort to engage community members that need to be at this table and that need to be kind of, you know, in the mix and understanding the ramifications of some of the changes that we're making. You know, frankly, I wish white flight were something that we didn't need to say anymore. And I don't think that that's true. And so I do think that it's going to be really important for us to You know, frankly, I, I wish white flight were something that we didn't need to say anymore and I don't think that that's true. And so I do think that it's going to be really important for us to, you know, have a very broad and, and open, and open-minded community conversation about, you know, the benefits of redrawing our districts to deal with historical segregation in our district. And so, and I think that takes time. That takes time. It takes trust. It takes relationship building. And so, and I, you know, my, my understanding of the ways in which, you know, we're, we're, the reasons why we're breaking this into phases is around wanting to make sure that we, you know, are really holding up CCLA as its own institution and celebrating the fact that it exists. And I think that, you know, it, it is my goal to make sure that, you know, every day we say these are the wonderful things that our district is doing, that our board is leading on, is the creation of something like CCLA and the championing of that model. And, and the way in which we are kind of cementing its long-term sustainability in our district over time is part of this process taking time. And it's part of this process is, you know, as an example, in a much, in a much broader set of, set of actions that are really about, you know, again, this, this future vision for making sure LC is safe and protected and amazing over the long term and, and that CCLA has a cemented future here. So, I, you know, there's, there's something to be said, I think, in, in really making sure that we understand the scope of everything that we're jumping into at this, in this, in this way. And if it is phases, then I want the phases to kind of be building on each other rather than taking one chunk at a time. And then, and I know that may, might seem like two, you know, six of one, half dozen of another, but I, I feel like I really want to understand the way in which this is moving holistically through a larger process and that, you know, folks are understanding every piece as being part of something that's bigger. And there's something that's a little concerning to me about, you know, just dealing with an immediate need in front of us that, you know, as Director Close mentioned, sharing space for another year doesn't mean that CCLA does not exist as an institution that we celebrate and hold up and, and really love on every day in this district. It's about, you know, how do we make sure that all of the values that, that go into celebrating and making sure that CCLA, you know, continues on into eternity with lots of support from us is really part of a, of a larger transformational cultural push that our district is able to lead on.
Director Medina and then Director McCormick.
I think one thing that I'd also like to add is that our, our policies are just one piece of like this larger problem that exists in our community, right? I think that, you know, having been here for the past, you know, 30 years, like a lot of what the issue that we're dealing with is whether it be white flight or whatever, it's misconceptions and perceptions of different parts of our community and of people that are, you know, from my personal experience are completely false, but those perceptions are what lead to that flight and that flight is enabled by our policies, right? And so our policies, I think, are something that's critical to the change. Our boundaries are just part of what our policies apply to. I think the, the transition that we're creating with CCLA, it's, it's in part to kind of like, in my opinion, crush those misconceived perceptions that people have to provide something new for people to wrap their minds and heads around them. And, and then our, our boundaries and our policies will then add to that process of change for the future that have been enabling, you know, those misconceptions. And so that's why, that's why I really like this process that we're taking, but, but I think it's really critical and important that we understand that what we're doing is not all, you know, we don't have power over everything and, and those misconceptions that exist out there. They have been ingrained generation after generation after generation. And I think that's part of what we're crushing and breaking, in my opinion. And I think this is critical work and it is going to take, you know, a while and, and it will take time, but, but doing this process now, you know, I have nothing but a positive outlook as to what I see the future for, not only that area of town, but our community as a whole. I, I see we're, we're, we're in transition, we're in transformation. And, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it right now. But, but I think it's critical that we add that to the discussion and that we're aware of that. That's all.
Thank you. Director McCormick.
Um, I just wanted to say again that I think momentum on this is crucial. And we are overwhelmed as a district in crisis management right now, but I think momentum's really important and I do, I, I don't know if I'm super comfortable with phase one, phase two. I kind of understand, I appreciate and understand the organization of like taking some steps, but I agree with Director De La Cruz that I really want to see this as one big movement forward and that instead of like phase check, phase check, that it's like more like steps and building and continuing momentum. Because I definitely want to avoid redundancies. I don't want to make mistakes that we have to go back and correct in a perhaps a phase one, if it translates into something we didn't anticipate as we get into the bigger picture and looking at the district as a whole. So I really want to make sure that if we're going in steps or we're building here, that we do very much have a holistic approach to what we're doing and we're thinking about the long term right from the start, even if steps get accomplished along the way, you know, like according to this timeline. But I just want us to really do this right. And I, I just feel like this is the time and we've got, you know, I don't want to be discouraged and feel like we got one shot at this, but I feel like we have to really be intentional about what we're doing. And so I agree that perhaps even more input, particularly in subcommittees or early phases especially, or, or maybe a loop back in or recheck in at certain points in this process. I think that would be good as well. And I know that's not like a definitive answer one way or the other, but this is a discussion. That's just kind of how I'm feeling. And I feel like momentum is important, but we need to really have a plan and not make decisions early that might cause obstacles later on that we didn't anticipate. So I just want to make sure we're very holistic in this process.
Thank you, Director McCormick. Director Manieri and then I see Director Medina has another comment.
Thank you, President Huang. So, what I would like to add to this discussion or this conversation, oh. Can you, can you all hear me? I'm sorry, my wifi. I'll turn my video off just because of my wifi. Okay. So what, what I would like to add to the conversation is, because I don't want to repeat a lot, but what I like about this phase one, phase two is that I, I see the change happening, like we, we see it happening now, soon, when, when we need it to happen. And I really resonated with Director Medina's comments about perception and misperception. Like this is what I've been waiting for since I was probably in elementary school. Like my parents didn't want to send me to cook. And it's been, it's been generation after generation in our, in our own family of these misperceptions. So what I like about this, this phased process is that I can see the change. Like I, I know that come January, we're going to see some sort of change. And so I, I appreciate that. And I think that it like, I, I think it's very well-designed in that way. And I also hear the, the intention behind a longer process that is also meaningful and provides opportunity for more inclusion. And, and I can support that it only if and when I can see those change. I, I can really visualize when those changes are going to happen. If we can really communicate to the community that, that they're going to see the changes and that their children will be taken care of and no, no longer will they feel this sense of anxiety over these constant like changes from like the top down. And, I mean, I also hear the community and, and that we need to, we need to get the ball rolling. Like we need to really do some work. So, so I, I appreciate the design of this process and what I can get behind are the, the kind of deadlines or, or the timing and can also see the value in a more extended process.
Go ahead, Director Medina.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Superintendent Kitamora if you could chime in with your thoughts on the phase one, phase two versus a more expanded process.
I will. I, I think Director Close should speak first and then I, I'm, I'm going to kind of wrap things up or let you know what I'm hearing and then offer some suggestions.
Thanks, Superintendent. And yeah, I mean, I'm interested to hear what you say too. I mean, you know, there's, I understand and I, and I think Director Manieri just really articulated that really well. And thank you for that. The, and I share the sense of urgency to make some change and to see some, some appreciable change. I, I get that. And, and this is something that, you know, sort of desegregating is something I've, I've been talking about since, you know, probably my first meeting on the board. And so I, I, this is, it's exciting opportunity and, and at the same time, it feels like an all, it feels like a generational opportunity and all hands on deck opportunity. And we are, the, the other thing on our agenda tonight is, is dealing with a, a multi-generational crisis in COVID. And I, we are, we are low in admin staff. We are, we are stretched pretty thin and everybody's doing a job that they never signed up to do right now in our district, right? Y'all are making it up as you go along. And, and so I just, to me, it's a lot to ask staff to kind of go through this twice to some degree. And I really want us to get this right. I really want us to get this right. And so, you know, I'm just kind of sort of making, I, I think I'm hearing I'm, I'm hearing some support in, from my colleagues about, about looking at a longer process and doing this as one kind of holistic process. And so I, I just want to make kind of a second plea for that, particularly i- in light of COVID. I don't, I, we have to be able to pivot really quickly and we don't know what the next few months are going to look like, certainly not in the next year. And so adding some quick timeline to that is, I think is, is a lot to ask and, and isn't necessarily, and it's just creating deadlines for ourselves that we don't necessarily need to do. You know, to, to Director Manieri's point and, and Director Medina's points, I think setting in place some really firm deadlines about the process and making some really clear commitments to how we're going to do community outreach, I think is critical and, and could, I mean, it's critical no matter what. But hopefully i- if we could, if we could really do that and really start soon. So it's really robust and even leaves us some leeway to say if at X point, we haven't had enough input, we still have time to stay on track and get more input to give folks confidence that we're really moving forward on this in a, in a meaningful way. I think that, that would be, that would be good. I'd, I'd feel good about that. So those are my final comments. Thank you for hearing me twice.
Anyone else? Okay, so my two cents really is that what I'm learning from this ad hoc school resource officer committee that's gone on for a long time because we've needed the time is that when community comes together and when people have time to understand and to inquire and listen to understand, the, the understanding grows exponentially. More and more questions come up. And I think what happens is the anxiety ri- rises when we don't know what's going on, when people don't know what to expect. And so I really like the inclusion of more people on the committee on phase two. I counted up, it's like 103 people. That's a big committee. We've had bigger, but it's important. And, you know, Zoom breakout rooms actually work really great. So, informing our public every step of the way, getting lots of input every step of the way, but knowing we have some, some hard deadlines. And also taking care of CCLA. We have, we have created this, they have created this school. We've created this school together and, and, and we've kept, it feels like pulling the rug out under them many times in terms of where they are, where they're going to be. So they really need an answer. They really need to be their school and we need to take care of the neighborhood kids who need to know where to go. So, without repeating what you all said, which are all brilliant, as we move forward and holistic, you said that and looking for unintended consequences as we plan. It's like playing chess, kind of like not knowing where the end is going to be, but knowing the end, you know, in, in what we want, it's in our mission vision. And so I have confidence that this committee is going to do a good job and and it's true. I'm going to reiterate what Director Close referenced is that our school administrators are doing big, big jobs. Staff is doing big, big jobs. And so too much is just too much. A human being can only do so much and, and really do a good job. So, slow within our timelines, I think it's going to be healthier for us. And I really want to thank our board because we, we did that self-survey and we were talking about, you know, discussing things and coming to, to, to some kind of agreement together and listening to each other. And I think, I think this is part of it. So I really appreciate that. I'm going to ask Director Kitamora now to kind of bring it back to us and what did you hear and what are you thinking now?
So, President Huang, I, I wonder if you ought to hear a public comment before I make a comment, before I talk. It'd be, just because I think it might be, you know, you might want to hear from the public. I do definitely have some thoughts and ideas about this. Or did we already hear, no, but we didn't. Did we hear from the public already?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, here we go. You ready? So, I, I heard a lot and I'm not going to repeat what I heard. What I think is that you are all after the same thing, but in different timeframes and in different ways. So, that, that's what I heard. What my thinking and what my, my ideas around this would be, first to ask Mr. Furchaw a question. And maybe also Mr. Foster, whoever wants to chime in. Could we, rather than it being hard and fast on what we're calling phase one, that it's more like a provisional or a, I don't know, that, that we let the public know that there's going to potentially be more work? We've looked at the boundaries and for the middle school and remind me, Rick, that the, the secondary boundaries for the high schools, it, it's, we're not really talking about them at this point. And I, and I, right at the, at the first phase is what we're talking about, right?
Right. The first phase is only making sure that neighborhood kids in the Cook attendance boundary have a traditional or neighborhood middle school that they could choose to attend for the 21, 22 school.
Okay, so that's one piece. The second one was the question to you, Larry or Milton, about this, you know, this is one building block in several building blocks to get to where we want to go with boundaries. Is that, is that, have you seen that happen? Is that a possibility? What do you think about that?
I, I have seen that happen where, you know, in growing districts, they have plans for bringing on, you know, elementary schools every couple of years. And people are buying houses with the understanding, okay, this year my kids are going to go to this particular school until this other school opens and then we may change or, you know, we may be staying at that other school. And so that's kind of a, a similar type of process as what we're doing is where we have outline of, of a boundary process. And I think if we're clear that, and if we continue with this two-phase approach, that the boundaries that are being discussed and potentially acted upon are are one-year boundaries at the middle school level affecting the former Cook attendance boundary and having it, you know, providing for a neighborhood school for all the students who reside within that boundary. And that's really what that's limited to. You know, we're going to be talking about the new, you know, the, the longer-term boundaries before these new boundaries even take effect. We'll already be in that process starting in, in January and February of talking about what the next longer-term boundaries are going to be and sharing that with the board by May, again, before these temporary boundaries go into place for students for that one year.
Okay. So, so that, that's one idea that I think is a possibility. The, I think that we have to be realistic about this entire process, whether it's phase one or phase two, or whatever the timeframe is going to be, is going to be controversial. It is going to elicit a lot of discussion. I, I think whether it's in phase one or phase two, or whether it's all one giant phase, I think we just need to accept that and develop the processes for clear, concise community input. for clear, concise community input that Director Manieri is talking about all along the way. So that's the third thing I was thinking about. The fourth and final thing is CCLA. And you guys can all, my fellow governance team, you can call me crazy, but I must say that having the opportunity to sit in committee with the CCLA and Cook staffs together and listening to the parents and the trials and tribulations that have happened from the day CCLA was begun to this point has been very, very difficult for that school community. And we have delayed to get into this process, which is a good thing. But at what point, and I, I just want to honor what they shared with me about feeling like we, you know, get to a certain point and then it's five steps backwards. And then we get to a certain point and then it's five steps backwards. And so it's important to me that we fulfill what we said we were going to fulfill for them. I just have to give you my thoughts about that. The board makes the decisions. You listen to me in terms of recommendation or my thoughts about it. You can do what you want to do with it. But having listened and been a part of all of the meetings that I was able to be a part of, I want to be able to go back and look at those folks and be in meeting with them and say, we fulfilled what we said we were going to do. So if there's a different timeline to that, then we're going to have to talk with them about it. But I think they've waited and have been patient and have really come to me and given flexibility and grace, even though they were in much, in great anguish over waiting another year. So that's, that's part of my, what my comment is to this as well.
Okay. Superintendent, this sounds like we are moving ahead with the committees as they are. We're going to be trusting in the process. Thank you to everybody who will be volunteering to be on these committees or already volunteered to be on these committees, and that we are going in with eyes wide open. We are going in to support all of our kids. And if we're looking at the board policy in terms of school attendance boundaries, there are 10 issues, more than that, 11 issues about why a district and a board is going to want to relook at boundaries. It's been a long time since we have looked at boundaries, and they include every single thing that we should be looking at for the good of everybody in our district. So, you know, we are not going into this, the board is not going into this to say, you will do this, we will do this. That is not what the board is saying. The board is saying, let's explore and let's get input and let's get community input. And I know when we have time, when we give time to the community and when people get to talk and they get to share and they get to be human beings together because we need that Zoom or no Zoom, one of these days we won't be on Zoom, the decisions we can come to are much better. And so I'm going to trust that process. All right. So that was a discussion item, and we are closing this one. We're going to be moving on. Thank you, everybody, for that discussion. We're going to be moving on. We need an interpreter change. Almost forgot. So let's just take a minute for that.
Thank you, President Fong. We are all set. Thank you.
All right. So I have to share because I have a neighbor who's a teacher, and she's in my yard at the board meeting, right over there. So yes, we haven't, yeah. Okay. This is discussion, this is action item number two, Santa Rosa City School to remain in distance learning to the end of 2020, 2021 first semester. And this is what we're talking about tonight. So I know this is of great importance to many, many people. So let's get started. Dr. Kidomora, is she here?
I am. I'm pulling up my presentation. Hold one second, please.
Okay. So I'm going to remind people that we put a time limit of an hour on this discussion, and I'm going to take a look at how many hands are up for public comment. And we, you know, usually it's three minutes, but if I see, you know, over 15, I'm going to be restricting to two minutes because we want to hear more people than fewer people.
Clarification, hour on the discussion or hour on the public comment?
Public comment.
I should have never gone to double screens right before a board meeting starts on, in Zoom because it is messing with my mind right now how to get this started. Hold on.
Okay. So actually, Dr. Kidomora, I'm going to take a minute to give us all a five-minute break. So you-
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, please.
Everybody else, it's a five-minute break.
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone back? Can I begin? Just let me know when I can start. President Fong.
That's a pretty impressive graphic there. Anting COVID.
Yeah. Rick and Stephen honestly say it's kind of scary.
Creepy.
We good? President Fong, can I begin? You're on mute, so.
Is Jen Close back? Okay, we have a quorum, so let's get started.
Okay. Tonight, we will be presenting a recommendation to the Board of Trustees regarding distance learning for the Santa Rosa City Schools District for the rest of the first semester. I'm just going to go over little information about kind of how we got to these, to get this recommendation. And so primarily, it's based on data, science, and guidance from various organizations and regulatory agencies. So all along, we've been talking about the fact that we really want to use data and science as the way in which we make the decisions that we make for the district. And along with that data and science, we get guidance from the state, whether it's the State Department of Education, California Department of Education, whether it is the California Department of Public Health, the Governor's Office. There are multiple state agencies and guidances that we are using and are bound and are obligated to use. From that, the CDHPH and the CDE specifically, the new blueprint for a safer economy was released that where we moved from watch lists to now tiers. And so that, that change has occurred with guidance along the line for that. And then finally, we have the Sonoma County Department of Public Health, who aligns to the California Department of Public Health in order to provide advice and suggestions and guidance to Sonoma County schools. So as we know, and I think it's just as of today or yesterday, we are in another two weeks of the purple widespread status. The county, the state, excuse me, checks every two weeks, and they just re-upped our two-week status because we are still not below that more than seven for daily new cases per 100,000. Our positivity rate is below the 8%, but in order for the state, for us to move to the next tier by state standards, we have to be meeting it in both cases as well as positivities. And these colors don't come out well, but it's really purple and then red and then orange and then yellow. And so if you look at the Sonoma County, excuse me, the California blueprint, you can actually select Sonoma County online. And this, this comes up with multiple data points to look at in terms of links to look at where we are in Sonoma County. So I pulled this as of 9/8. I believe there might be a newer one than this that has been calculated. But we still, the fact of the matter is we're still in purple status. At the time of pulling this data on November, excuse me, September 8th, it was 14.2 cases, case rate. And our positivity was 6.7. So again, even in purple at the 9/8 date, we were okay in positivity rate, but we were not okay in cases. And today I heard from Dr. Mace in their county call that we are at 10%, or 10% in terms of case rate. So another data point that we have been provided with is a risk calculator for the University of California. Sorry about that. My, my trigger finger here goes faster than. And this risk calculator, I'm going to pull this over, is an interactive model risk factor whereby you can put in the state of California and you can put in Sonoma County. And you can put in the cohort sizes that we are hoping for is between 12 and 16. And so let's do the 12, which would be for elementary. And what this shows is, is that there is an 11.2% risk that in a group of 12 students or children, at least one child would be carrying the COVID virus. When we look at 16 students- Yes?
We cannot see your screen.
Oh, no. I wonder why.
I can see it.
I see it.
A risk calculator?
Uh huh. Yeah. I pulled it over into the shared side.
Oh, I apologize. I'm not seeing it.
Okay. When we use the cohort size of 16, which would be our secondary schools, the risk goes to 14.6% that a child will have the COVID virus in that group of 16. And I show that here. So that data, along with the ever-occurring factors that we take a look at, which is where we are in Sonoma County, impacts to our students, impacts to our employees, and just the sheer logistics of managing all of this in a very, I would say, in an environment where things change almost, you know, every other day. There's so much information and that it begins to become almost he said, she said in terms of looking at data. And so what we're going to do is we're always going to look to the county who then looks to the state. And what we are faced with at this point, oh my goodness, my poor mouse is just so triggered, just so quick, is we're looking at currently being in the purple tier or widespread, hopefully moving into the tier substantial red, you know, in the next, hopefully next couple of weeks or so, that if we are in tier red substantial, we have to be there for 14 days before we can make any kind of movement as a district. And along with that 14 days and then the decision of what we would do, the county is very concerned about moving into flu season. That flu season begins in October and that now we would be faced with not only trying to self-assess and assess for COVID when kids come to back, but if kids came back, but also for flu symptoms as well. And then, as we've all heard, there's no vaccine that seems to going to be ready on a large-scale basis until next year. If we were to bring kids back in the purple area, special needs, high needs assistance, we can only bring 25% of that population back onto the campus. We have to address specialized needs for underserved students. Many of you have heard, and it is a part of our strategic plan, we must ensure that our most underserved students are getting what they need during this very critical time. And I want to be very clear that when we're talking about all of this data, all of the considerations, all of the factors, all of the information, primary grades have been the priority. They, the, every piece of writing, every piece that we get from the state and the county talks about K through six, bringing back K through six. There isn't much discussion around the middle and high school, and that's because in the primary and the elementary grades, we can keep them in pretty stable cohorts of 12. At the high school, and this question is now on the desk of Dr. Mace, we are essentially having kids in classes of 16 for first period, let's say. But when they move to their next period class, the cohort mixes and it's a different group of students. And then when they go to their third class of that day, they're mixing again. And so when we first did the return to school plan, this was, we did not see the effects of opening up California in May. And as we've moved forward into May, June, July, to me, the restrictions or the mitigations are greater than they were when we developed the plan. Because I've had the question asked to me, we developed the plan and hybrid was okay then, why is it not okay now? And I would, what I say to that is, what we knew then is different than what we know now. And so that's why that change has to be addressed. And we have to talk about it, and that's why I'm bringing it up in this forum. A new issue has arisen that we became aware of last week, and that is, we are responsible for contact tracing and testing staff in San Rosa City Schools. And just our initial talks about how we manage that is creating a need for us to really delve into how is it that we support this, the tracing and the testing in our given circumstances, whether it be financial, whether it be the availability? How are we to address that? What I heard today, again, from the Dr. Harrington and Dr. Mace, was that the state has come out with this contact tracing and testing, but they are not going to be ready for us until November. And so we're going to have to deal and delve into that piece of it. School staff are essential workers. Therefore, their testing, they don't have to pay for testing. That's all fine and good, but what about the availability of that testing? Where do they have to go to get that testing? The other piece of that is, we can't work under circumstances, in my opinion, when we have kids- when we have kids and staff back together, with testing that takes five days, seven days. It has to be rapid response so that we know we can keep things going or close quarantine and close things down. All of this, all of this is gonna be working together with SRTA, not only to begin serving our most vulnerable populations, but as we look towards the decisions that we're going to need to make to implement in-person instruction, distance learning instruction, because we know that some still want, some, some students and some staff still want to stay in distance learning, no matter when we go to hybrid. And so that's another factor to consider. And then as always, we talk about space, we talk about finances. And this is a big one. The legislature didn't get it, get out of committee, the liability protection for school districts in this situation. And so basically, we don't have any liability protection at this time. I spoke about this just a second ago, and that is, when we look at the number of students who want to stay in distance learning and the ones that want to remain in hybrid, if we extrapolate the data that we received at the beginning of this, of all of this about what students wanted to do, it would be 5,600 want to remain in distance learning, 9,800 would want to stay in hybrid. We are going to do another survey. Because now the kids are in school, I think there could be some changes about this. And we need this data because we have to staff it. And so right now, through our interactive and accommodation practices, we have basically 72 teachers who are remote or modified accommodation. If you do the math, 72 teachers are not going to be, is not enough to, to serve 5,658 students. And so then there is a process that we have to go through to work with SRTA about transfers, about, you know, just the whole gamut of things that we need to do in order to ensure we have appropriate staffing for both in hybrid and distance learning. And then the same is true with our classified staff. Our classified staff, we have eight, 78 staff who have a modified or remote accommodation. And so then, again, we had to ensure, do we have appropriate staffing with our support staff in hybrid and distance learning? So this is, this is just reiterating kind of all along the way, but I've titled this, "The Realities of In-Person Learning." And as you can see, I've divided it between health and safety, students, staff, and SRCS. And I'm not gonna read each one of them, but it was reiterated again to me today that contact tracing, staff testing, and the flu season are something that we have to consider. I think another thing is that we have to really look at how we serve our underserved, our special needs population as soon as possible and as soon as it's safe. I think we have to be realistic to the fact that nobody's talking about secondary. And so I will be pushing, pushing on that to get answers around that. I think the, the impact to parents, student stability and social, emotional, the counseling, the learning loss, there are things that I know my cabinet is looking at to increase what's happening in the afternoons, such that students can be served when the needs, when their needs, when they show they're having these needs. We're working together with the principals as well, as well to identify what's actually going on and how children access those services. And then in staff, it's just a whole, you know, a wider range of things that we have to work together with staff on that are listed here. I think the one thing that I want to say is that I don't know if I can adequately, adequately describe the stress and anxiety staff is feeling about distance learning and the whole new way of things and COVID in general. I, and I'm hearing it from my other colleagues, superintendents as well. And so it, it, we have to, we have to talk about it. We have to address it because it's there and it's real. And then finally, you know, just again, a list of things that we have to consider as we move forward and make the decisions around staying in distance learning. I've provided some questions to, to help the board in their discussion. And I hope that this is helpful for you. There's a couple of things that I want to bring up prior to turning this back over to the board. We have been listening to feedback from, from various people. I appreciate the emails. I appreciate the phone calls that have come in. The, the parents are, have anxieties as well. There's so many factors that affect the family as we are in distance learning and in their work environment and, and, you know, all of that. I totally understand that. And the other part of that is the feeling or the empathy I have with our students who are, some who are thriving, some who are struggling, really struggling. And for the students who, especially secondary students who have this dream about what high school's about and what they should be doing in high school. And so I want to acknowledge that. And then finally, I, I think that there are some, there are some, you know, ways in which as you're discovering, discussing this, that, you know, you, you could look at things such as when we move to hybrid, that there, we have that opt-in and opt-out process. And so it isn't, if someone is not comfortable with coming back in to hybrid instruction, there's the ability to choose distance learning, and I didn't want to forget about that. The other thing too, I said there was only a few things, but I guess there's more than that. Sorry. When we move to tier three, if we don't open school in tier three in hybrid, or tier two, excuse me, red, then, and the county should move back to purple, we can't think about reopening until we move back to red. So I just want, I just want, that was, those were things that were brought up and feedback to me, and I want to be very transparent and put that out there to the board as well. So I think with that, yes, that is the end of my presentation. I'm gonna leave the questions up because I can see you all and address any questions you may have, as well as my team, cabinet team is ready to address as well. So.
Thank you, Superintendent. At this point, so it'll be the same. The board will ask questions and then we'll open it up to public comment after that. And then the board will reconvene for discussion. And since I can't see everybody, could you just raise your hand in the chat? Board members.
Ashley, can I stop sharing my screen because you have this presentation in front of you? And you can see the questions. May I do that? Because then we can all see each other. Okay?
Be helpful.
Okay, I'm gonna do that. Yay.
Okay. So I see Director McCormick, Director Medina. Wait, no, I don't see him. Yes. Director McCormick, Director Medina, for right now.
And Director Sheffield. A couple of questions. So just to be clear, if, if we went to tier two, substantial red tier, we moved into that on the 15th day and we chose to start the hybrid version in that moment, if that's before we break for winter break, before December 18th, I think. So if we move into that and we open the hybrid option and then the county goes back to the purple tier, we will not have to shut down, but we shift into a quarantine model that we get to stay open, but then those quarantine regulations then begin to apply.
Correct.
And so, okay, and so if we don't open, if, if we even got into substantial before December 18th, if we didn't open and then we slide back into the purple tier, the widespread tier, then we don't have the option to reopen at that point until we go back to red.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. And then my other question was, and I, there's so many dates and things of when things are gonna be available. What was the thing that you said that even though it's being established, you've been told it really isn't gonna be available and up and running till November?
Yes, that's the testing and the contact tracing. That's really, that's a state, that came from the state?
Mandate, right?
Oh, sorry.
That's a state mandate, correct?
Right, from the state. And so they're not prepared for, you know, they're not ready. They won't be ready until November.
So it's a mandate now, but it won't, they won't be ready to support us in that, and we're responsible for that.
Correct.
But they're not gonna be ready to support us in that until sometime in November.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Director Medina?
Thank you. So before I say what I'm gonna say, I just want to say that one of the things that's being sacrificed in this whole process is the educational outcomes of our students, right? They are gonna suffer. There's gonna be a loss in, in, in those outcomes overall. But looking at everything that I'm seeing, both with the information that you're providing, you know, the costs around that mandate, the reality around these figures that we're seeing with the county, which, you know, I'll add, I think now it was at 5.8, but we're also not at the two-to-three week period after Labor Day where we see any spikes that are potentially to rise, as expected after 4th of July, that coupled with the stuff that Dr. Fauci and Dr. Redfield are saying and, and the fiscal responsibilities that we have or liabilities that we have. I, I'm actually thinking that the best thing for us to do is really just move all the way down to the June 4th, 2021 deadline. And my question is, are there things that would inhibit us to do, from doing that, if we chose to do that? Is there, is there any laws or anything that would restrict us from, from being able to, to hold off on reopening to that point?
I, I don't know of any laws, Director Medina. I, I guess my kind of gut reaction to that is that I, I have to have some hope that we might be able to reopen, whether it's December, whether, whatever it is. You know, because I think first and foremost, the thing that all of us want as our kids to, you know, be back in school. Right now, just the, the things that are going on doesn't allow that. But to answer your question about whether there's something that legally prevents us from doing that, unless the team, can you think of anything where that's the case? Steve?
The only thing I, I would do, if we're capable of serving the vulnerable populations, that's, that's part of the legislation that we need to make sure we're able to do.
Yeah, and, and the legislation also says, "To the greatest extent possible." And so if the, if the things tip where we are able to open because it is safe, based on what we've been saying all this time, and we didn't open, we would not be following to the greatest extent possible. I can see that.
But that's to the vulnerable populations, correct?
Yeah. No, no, just, it, it, no, in general, it's, we need to open for the, at, we need to provide in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible, is the law.
Well, that said, I, you know, I, given all the variables that I'm seeing, I, I highly doubt at the December 18th point, we'll be able to transition. If we are, great. But at that point, I think it's, it's gonna be a rough transition. And it's gonna be, it's gonna exact the high fiscal toll on us. So I think it's gonna be rough. But, you know, and ultimately, I think we'll, we'll be going till June 4th, is my, my prediction. You know, but I'll support the December 18th date for now. But, but really, I think that I, what I've seen in terms of how people are acting out in the community, what we're seeing in terms of the lack of testing, the lack of availability of testing, the figures aren't, aren't right, and I think we're not seeing the full picture, but we're basing it on the data that we do have.
Right.
And so, so I worry. And, and, and those are the things that are kind of like in my head and, and leading to, to, you know, I, I want to have hope as well. I want kids to be in school, but, but at the same time, I want us to care about people's well-being, care about people's lives. And, and, and I am curious also to know kind of about the anxiety and, and stuff that our staff are feeling. Like, could you elaborate maybe on that?
Yeah. Steve, do you want to address that?
Just, we've heard it in multiple different areas. We listen very deeply to our, our SRTA partners or CSEA partners. And that's why going into it, we offered a district-sponsored staff immediate kind of health and wellness through our SOS, through a vendor that you have already approved going into this. Usage has not been strong, and so we want to continue to communicate that. And SRTA has, has jumped on. They'll help us promote that to make sure teachers are getting the resources right away. Because there was a lag time getting into their services through their current healthcare. We provided a more immediate access so they can get some immediate help.
And then Dr. Guzman, do you want to talk about the self-care that we just are gonna be able to hopefully put together?
Yes, and I actually haven't been able to give you some additional information. We do have some teachers, and I do really appreciate through our Wednesdays, the partnership with our teachers, being able to teach teachers, offering some different types of way to really approach self-care and self-wellness as we know that our teachers are stressed. And today I just had a teacher who is wanting to provide yoga on Wednesdays under the umbrella of self-care and self, just breathing exercises to center ourselves. So very grateful that we're also gonna be able to offer some of that professional development on Wednesdays for our teachers as well.
And, and I think it really is rooted in the fact that staff wants to do their very best in a situation that is uncertain, number one, and number two, there are, this is just such a different way of providing teaching and learning. You know, I know that the feedback I've gotten, there are things we have to work on. There's no doubt about that. And, and the team is so, working so hard to adjust and take a look at what we can do to, to move things around, do some, some things. So, you know, I, I think it's really born out of, teachers also are parents. Teachers and classified staff are also parents. They, teachers and classified staff want to do the very job, best possible job. And all of this uncertainty creates anxiety. And then what the future holds as well. So, yeah, I, I think I would, that's what I would say the anxiety is from. And, and, and I'm not saying that nobody, that the other folks in the world don't have it. But my world right now is the San Rosa City Schools District, and these are the people that I serve and want to support. So.
And in terms of that anxiety, have we, or, or can we plan to maybe assess anxiety around potential reopening come potentially January or whatever? Like, how do folks actually feel about that? Because I think that might be something else that we need to take into consideration come at that point. Right now, there's all these, I think, what was it, like 72 staff or whatever?
Yeah.
But, but come, at that point, would that, would those figures change? And I think maybe assessing current anxiety around that, maybe coming back, given their current situation, versus also those that really do want to come back, like, right away.
Yeah, we're gonna do a survey, so to find out all of this information. It's more, I hate to even call it a survey because it's more in-depth than that. But I think we should look at, I think it's a great idea to look at an assessment, a kind of like a universal screener, but for staff, Steve. So we will explore that. I think that there's something to that.
Yeah, we're already working at the middle school level. We have a grant from Kaiser called the Rise Grant. And that's one of the things they've already built in. We were planning for in the spring. So I know they're planning those kind of things at the middle school. We could probably extrapolate it and bring it up to, across exactly from there.
Great.
Uh, board members, other clarifying questions? Okay, I see no hands. Yes, I.
I'm, my hands up, thank you.
Director Dana Cruz and Director Sheffield.
Um, talking about kind of the ways in which the state mandate will or will not be supported with funding, I'm curious about that, like the costs of contact tracing and testing. Um, as well as are we expected to hire all of those contact tracers? Um, are they, are they district staff and how are we paying for them?
Right. So, um, our nurses, bless them, on their own, uh, took the John Hopkins Certification Course for Contact Tracing. And that is the course that's being recommended by, um, county and state. Um, but here, here's the, here's where I see there's a, a, a challenge. Our six nurses, uh, need to do their nursing job. They don't need to contact trace, but they're going to have to until we train people or hire people. And, and I say all this after we met with SCO yesterday about how we have going to, you know, potentially have to borrow money because of our fiscal situation. So, so that's the contact tracing and budgeting for all of that. I, I, I can't even, because I just found out this last week, we haven't had even time to budget what that could end up costing us. The testing, um, if it's twenty-five, twenty-five percent of this employee population every two weeks. So think, you know, that's, we're talking in the million dollar range for that. Uh, and again, the testing has to be fast response or rapid response. It cannot be this, you know, drawn out, um, testing.
So is there a possibility that the contact tracers would be SCO employees, or they, do they have to be district by district? Is there a way in which we can kind of increase capacity, centralizing it in some way?
That was a question asked today, um, and in a roundabout way, we're on our own.
And we're on our own, also paying for it out of existing funds, or what?
If we do it now, it's going to come out of our pocket. Like if we start now. If we, and we, I don't know what the reimbursement process is for the state, because the state, state's supposed to cover this. I imagine since we're only getting sixty-seven percent of our funding, that maybe we'll not get all of that, so. Um, so it's now, or we wait till November where the state put, puts into place where we're supposed to test and who's supposed to contact trace. So, i- it's, I, I apologize, I don't have more information about costs. Uh, this really threw us for a loop last week on Friday.
So, I mean, I, I think there are, l- l- looking at disaster finance recovery just generally across the board, I think it's really important to kind of, you know, the, the county is now well-versed in disaster funding planning and using contingencies and percentages that we know are, are just going to be lost because because FEMA, because, because receipts, because whatever, right? And so, um, I, I'm wondering if there's some way of, of doing some contingency budgeting around possible reimbursements um, based on what it is that we know, and at least trying to to, to start in some way.
We have, we, yeah, we, we're going to start, we're, we're going to start. I am not depending on anybody, sadly. I, I, we are our own entity, I'm not going to depend on them. And Rick, do you want to speak to how we're going to, you know, keep track? It'll be a new, probably a different budget code where we keep track, budget and keep track of these kinds of expenditures. At the, for the time, we could probably u- u- use some of our learning loss mitigation funds. Um, but I really would like those funds to go for students and their, you know, support for learning loss. But Rick, do you want to speak to this bit?
Yeah, excuse me. To, to that point, uh, since the beginning of this, we started coding all expenditures related to COVID differently. So one, we could easily, uh, fill out FEMA forms, which if anyone's been through that knows that that's not an easy process.
No.
Uh, so in preparation for that, at the start, we created our, our own resource codes. To, to mark that in, as guidance came in from the state, we've switched over to, um, uh, what are called SACS codes, official codes, so we can track that, those funds. Uh, we're continuing to put on, uh, special resource codes, depending on where it comes from, to further be able to drill down through the budget uh, in order to keep track of this money, because, uh, as Superintendent Kitamora said, uh, the learning loss funds are really designated for learning loss, right? And, and that's where we want to spend those funds. Uh, we also realize that those funds do expire as of right now, so we have to keep that in mind as well. So we'll be looking at all of those, uh, as well as, uh, other opportunities for resources to help with this and, and, you know, pushing on the state for helping with this. The one thing that I don't want this to become part of for, for COVID is that this falls under the mandated block grant funds that we get, uh, seemingly pennies on the dollar for, uh, mandated tasks. Uh, but this is actually paid, uh, paid out of, uh, its own fund to, to help us with this. Based on, you know, where we're at, uh, uh, in a number of different areas concerning our financial stability for this year and out years.
And I have, uh, I have filled in Senator McGuire on all of this, so.
Excellent, good. Yeah, he will, he will champion us.
Yes.
Um, and my other question is related to, um, and I, I don't want to, um, kind of take, take my, my colleagues, uh, wind out of her sails here, but I just want to join the drumbeat for outdoor ed. Um, I know there has been some movement with Learning House. I'm so excited that my kid's going to get to go on a virtual field trip. Um, you know, soon, and so I, but I just wanted to see, you know, and I recognize the ridiculousness that we are facing in Sonoma County in particular with trying to plan for our kids to be outdoors when we just spent twenty, twenty, how many, how many days indoors? Twenty, um, twenty smoke-filled days, twenty-something smoke-filled days indoors, but, um, you know, looking at the possibility of really kind of using what we do know science is telling us is that outdoors is best.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, masks outdoors is like the way we can keep each other safe and sane and, and keep our kids safe and sane. And so I just, I'm really wondering if there has been any further motion on, you know, the possibilities of just blowing up our buildings and saying like, let's do this outside. Um, and not really blowing up our buildings. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating for that, but Omar. Um, but really just kind of getting outside of our walls here.
Yes, uh, my staff is sick of me, uh, for constantly reminding them about, um, that this is not an add-on. It is a structure. It is a way in which we're going to, uh, provide education. Uh, and we're taking baby steps. Uh, Dr. Guzman and her team are working really hard on that. We're taking baby steps. I am so pleased. We've got a donation from Direct President Huang, Mr. For the over one hundred glass, um.
Richard Kaywood.
Mr. Kaywood, thank you, Mr. Kaywood, if you're listening, glass, uh, whiteboards, but they're not white, they're glass. Because they're going to go outside. They're, they're, we, we, he, for free, he's donated, I think about a hundred and twenty of them. Beautiful. And so we're, we are, we're preparing, uh, Learning House is writing it into the, all of their plans, that it, it will be um, outdoors and that I wa- actually want a whole, you know, screen path of outdoor education, uh, environmental education, excuse me. Yes.
I mean, even if it's not environmental, I would be fine with my kid doing math outside, you know, I just want my, I just want my kid to be doing math. You know, and so, and, you know, and I, I think that one of the things that we all have recognized, and mine with, you know, Director Medina's comment, is that yes, our, our learning losses are happening right now, you know? I think a lot of us have let go of that, um, so that we can all be okay and give each other grace and, and, and our kids and our teachers and everybody in the system some grace, but, um, you know, I, I'm also recognizing that I, I, I do not have the capacity to teach my fourth grader how to do multiplication of multiple numbers. And, and I want, you know, and, and I know that she could get that from amazing teachers in the district by being outside safely. And so I just really want, you know, I, I think that it would just bring some, I don't know, some, just, you know, what, what we have, all of us who have learned how to live through this pandemic in the last seven months know that you can see people safely outside with masks on, you know, at some distance. And so we need to be doing that in our school system, because we know that that's what science is telling us, and that will also, I mean, to the extent that all of our, you know, outdoor, um, seeing friends with masks on and eating outdoors in restaurants, you know, and all of those things that we have, that we have modified the way that we live outdoors now. I just, please, please, please let us, let us do that here, because that will just, that will make such a difference. It will make such a difference to our kids and to their friends. And, and, you know, I think we've all, you know, I think we were really scared about what it was going to be like to try to mask kids up and keep them away from each other indoors. And outdoors, it's just different. It's just different. I think everybody who's a parent, everybody who's, you know, dealt with kids, trying to figure out how to keep them sane knows strap a mask on them and let them go outside. And it, you know, it is the difference between sanity and, and complete and total lack of of sanity.
I know.
Um, so I just, please, please, um, if you can hear another voice, Diane, if you need more voices to be added to the voices that are making people insane, um, I, I promise you that the benefits will outweigh the insanity of hearing the voices and the drumbeats, so please send our kids outside to learn.
Yeah, no, my, you hear that, my team?
Got it.
So our, our special underserved population needs, let's plan them for outside, not inside, Steve. Okay.
All right, so let me remind this board that this is question time. Just saying. Final questions and, uh, to our administrators as well, clarifying answers. Uh, Director Sheffield.
Thank you. Um, Diane, thank you for putting together this presentation. I think having the facts and the science um, be what is grounding this proposal, I think it's necessary. My first question is the, um, the second survey for students and staffing, when will that be going out?
Um, we're working with IT because we want it to go out like we did the last one, which is when we ask the question about what they would like, it's attached to a student identification number. So Rick, what, what do you think our timeline is on that?
We, excuse me, we have ready to go out by, uh, the end of the week or Monday. Uh, we just have to make some, uh, decisions about some of the historical data and how we want to preserve that, and then we'll be able to send it back out.
So I would say, I would say next week, because I have questions already that I, I want to work on a little bit, so I would say next week.
The sooner the better, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, now my next, uh, set of questions, I think we have two hundred and twenty-eight people participating in this, uh, Zoom. I'm sure that many of them are parents, so this is, these are general questions around, um, expectations and/or versus realities. Um, I am wondering with an audience of two hundred and twenty thirty now, par- participants, um, are we having communication around student grading and testing? And, um, I bring it up every time. Clearly discussions with families and students around attendance, um, and expectations there. A- Alegria brought up learning loss. How about questions? My question is, what are we doing about, uh, again, opportunities, um, for students, um, around supports? These are questions that I, I don't think that, that, that it's, it's getting out there to, to families, whatever these answers are. So at every meeting, I'm going to find a way to insert this in. As a question, what are we doing with an audience of two hundred and now twenty-nine participants? Somebody keeps jumping on and off.
So I think, uh, Dr. Guzman can answer that. I think Mr. Mazzarri can, has a piece of that. Um, I don't know who wants to go first.
I can go first. Um, we had our DAC and DLEC meeting last week to discuss the, uh, plan that, uh, will be going out for, um, a little bit later, and a lot of the questions were around attendance. And so we're able to answer for those parents that were there, and I think Steve can talk a little bit about, sort of what the next steps are with that. I can tell you that at our principals' meeting yesterday, as Dr. Kitamora sort of, um, alluded to, we did engage with our principals around the afternoon. Um, that's really embedded into that schedule to address, um, not just learning loss, but also the social and emotional wellness of our students. Um, and so engaging with them and really coming, um, to see some of the list, uh, we agreed that, um, my, my staff and representatives from elementary, middle and high school, um, principals will get together and, um, create, I think, a more coherent list that we can share with families with the exact resources that we are, um, giving at those different grade levels so that we, so parents can actually, um, interact with those resources, whether it's meeting with counselors, or going to a club, or having tutoring, or, um, being able to participate in circles with restoratives. Or, um, being able to actually participate in some, um, video game, um, sport activities.
E- e- esports.
Esports, thank you. Um, so I think all of those are incredibly important, and this is an opportunity that is in our schedules, and we need to address though, so that the totality of not those, just these two hundred and twenty-nine parents, but the totality of the parents of our fifteen thousand students are aware of what we're offering so that we can, so students can participate.
On the attendance front, we were grateful to get some feedback last week from our, our DLEC group and the clarity around really what's different about from the parent side of it, what's different about attendance, what's the same, what processes are the same, what are different? We're going to have something ready for back-to-school nights, kind of just a little, uh, one-pager. That'll be kind of a, a quick down-and-dirty explanation. Uh, but in terms of processing for attendance, I think we're getting the groove, the mechanics of it, the teachers around the mechanics of it. One thing that's really working well is our re-engagement world. We're now coming into the third week of the state law requires us to identify students that have, uh, not attended for sixty percent of the time. And that re-engagement strategy of calling everybody and going through those lists, we've got principals now that are asking for lists that are less than sixty percent because they don't want kids to fail that far. And they got enough of, of calling mechanisms in place that they can reach out to students in advance of that. So as, as we dial tho- those in, and we've been really grateful to have the, the reassignment use of, uh, CSEA and make it all hands on deck, make those calls, we're really getting some positive results out of that.
And also, uh, when we've, uh, heard the principals about, I, I would have to say, I thought I didn't expect as much as I heard was going on in the afternoon as was going on. But the question is exactly what you're saying, Director Sheffield. How do parents know?
Yeah.
But in what ways do parents know? Is it on the website with a schedule of times and, you know, contact information? So that's the work of, of, uh, Anna and her team to, to get that. Um, I didn't know what virtual recess was in the afternoon, but that's going on. And so I want, I want all kids to be able to go to virtual recess.
Oh, yeah. Um, so how about, um, uh, testing, state testing and advanced placement tests, SATs, ACTs?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, we haven't really, I, I haven't heard too much about the state testing as of yet. We are doing ALPAC testing, that is required, and that's going to get started really soon. And, you know, we sort of, uh, as we've seen, some of the CSU and, um, state colleges are now getting rid of some of those testing, and, and we've actually pushed off some of the testing as well, just kind of seeing what's going to happen. Sort of waiting to see what's happening, just where, where we are within the tiers, um, since most of those testings have happened at school sites. Um, and so I think it's also important to put that up on the website as well, to communicate where we are in that process, or I'm going to cough. So.
Well, I, I read something about, um, the, the university APG requirements also being waived, is that? Is that something I, you know, is, is that, do you know if that's the case? For twenty twenty-one?
I haven't heard that.
I haven't heard that.
I'm happy to look into that and bring that back.
We, we are, we are, um, looking at, um, extending the math waiver um, because of all of this that's going on. And so you'll hear more about that later on. The, uh, there is an assessment and assessment schedule for elementary. Um, and so some of the tests are still going to go on. Some of them, is it DRA that really needs to be in person? We're suspending until the next, uh, trimester?
Correct. Um, but I can tell you, like, today, for example, during the professional development, um, one of our TOSSAs led a very strong professional development on Let's Go Learn, which is also one of our testing mechanisms that not only we use at the elementary level, but middle and high two for, um, but middle and high two for, um, uh, our EL students and assessing their, um, levels of English and RFEPing them as well. So, um, the good news is that it was very well attended and, and, and teachers are interested in continuing that use outside of, not only for EL students, but for other students as well.
Okay. You know, I just found it here. California State University and UCs agreed to accept credit, no credit or pass/fail.
Yes, yes.
For APG.
Yes.
That's why, that's what I read.
Yes. Okay. Sorry. The, yes, we knew that from the before that they'll accept our, uh, credit, no credit for last, yeah, last semester.
Okay. And I think that also needs to be expressed and made very clear to our students as well.
Yeah. And I, I will give a shout out to all of our counselors who are, are really, um, working with our students to make sure that their parents know that, but we can definitely do a better job. And maybe even have like a section on all of the high schools, um, just highlighting some of these different changes specifically through the lens of, of, of our juniors and seniors.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. By the way, Nicole Tafoya is back in San Rosa City School.
I see, I think no other hands up and this is return to school.
Jenny.
Director Close.
I did have a, thank you. I just wanted to know, especially as we're looking at, at doing this further, where we're at with, um, some of the concerns around our classified, um, employees who were, uh, being required to, to work it onsite, who thought they, they could do their job at home. Just kind of wanted to report on that if you could. And thank you, Alegria, for asking my question about outdoor Ed.
Would, uh, Rick or, uh, Steve, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I'm aware of, uh, a part of the re-engagement strategy. We are having employees come into classrooms, come into schools. So as far as I know, those processes are going pretty well. We have some, uh, workers that are being reassigned to support childcare and, and daycare. And so that's part of how we've, we've been able to open up. We've got probably about 40 seats for employees now that we're doing that. And part of that is around some of this reassignment work. We're working individually. If anyone is part of the practice, the interactive process, because they're taking care of a, a, a family member, a child. I think it's been really helpful to open up that employee childcare and that has relieved some of that pressure. But of course, there are still families that are hesitant to have their children come, come in person. And we're trying to work through those as best we can to meet the MOU and the contract.
I've seen a real difference with, uh, the, the childcare, employee childcare opening up. I also think that there was anxiety around some delays in hearing back about where staff were in the interactive process. And so in this last week or so, we've been, it, well, the staff has worked really hard at getting that cleaned up, cleared up, communications out. And so, um, a- and usually I'll get an email or I'll hear something and I, it's been pretty quiet. So I, yeah, I think that's where it, it's, it's moved forward in a good way.
Just, I think it's, it's really important, you know, there, that if our classified staff is doing sort of an equivalent of a job as, as a teacher, even, even interacting with a student, that teacher is home and that classified staff be, um, afforded the same opportunity. And want to be really careful about having two different sets of criteria here. And that, that's some of the things that we've been hearing. So hope, it sounds like you're working on that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Who am I missing? Questions? All right. That question session, I'm just going to keep us on track, folks. We, about an hour, it's an hour of our questions, just FYI. And I know that we have public comments and they, people want to weigh in. So let's listen to them now. And I am not sure how many hands we have up. I think we have.
13.
13. I'm going to ask folks to, 14. So I'm going to ask folks to, okay, more. I'm going to limit these to two minutes. And we have a, a total of an hour for public comments. So once we get to 30, we'll, we'll, we'll stop that. And, um, all right. We need a, uh, interpretive break right now though. So hang on one more time. I know you guys have been very patient waiting to make your public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, President Fong.
We're all set. Thank you. All right. So, um, we have a timer up and it's a two minute limit and, um, we have an hour for this. And thank you for waiting, everybody.
Okay. So this is the official call for public comment. And our first public comment for item D2 is Robin Fuentes. You have a two minute limit, Robin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just want to say, I am a resident of Sonoma County, resident of Santa Rosa. I have three kids in Santa Rosa City Public Schools. One of my children is special needs. All my kids are earlier in their, early on in their education. And I want to make a comment. I, I understand the science. I appreciate everything that's gone into this. And I've been following the data since the beginning. I also happen to be a county employee, so I can speak to a lot of things that you guys have been talking about, including contract tracing, contact tracing and testing procedures. My, the impact, you know, all the data is great, but the impact and the social, emotional toll on my children cannot be measured. Science can't measure that right now. And it's, although it's important, science is important regarding the virus, it cannot measure the negative toll this is taking, this distance learning and everything being up in the air. And it's having effects, as you guys said yourself, on staff and the children. There are protocols that can be put into place and I know you guys have even planned for this because this has been six months in the making. It's been rumored and talking about happening for a very long time. And, um, science also says that COVID is here to stay and likely a vaccine won't have a significant impact on the virus and won't be widely available. So how long are we going to live like this? If some kids are back in school, likely some teachers might be able to come back to school. But when does the negative impact that is distance learning absolutely going, that is happening absolutely right now, stressing kids out, stressing parents out, stressing teachers out? When does that outweigh the possible impact that some possible outbreaks may happen? Daycare's preschools are open in this county. Private schools are open in this county. Neighboring counties such as Marin, just a week ago, were going to open. This, this has.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Next up is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Uh, this is Micah Carlin.
Oh, my.
I am a teacher on special assignment for Santa Rosa City Schools. I can see the timer on my screen. So SRTA did actually do an occupational stress survey the past two weeks. We had almost 20% of our members reply. 93% of them feel stressed at work. 50% are reporting depression and anxiety attacks. 60% are reporting frequent headaches or thoughts of quitting. 70% are reporting insomnia. If I sound stressed, it's because I am. The level of stress reported, 70% reported severe or extreme stress. There is not a single teacher I know who wants to be doing distance learning. But we're also not willing to put our students' lives and our students' parents' lives at stake. Florida opened. The National Education Association has a COVID in schools tracker. Since August 1, there have been 311 school-related outbreaks in the state of Florida. That's seven outbreaks a day, every day, seven days a week. They have confirmed more than half a dozen staff have died due to COVID from these outbreaks. Nobody wants to be on remote learning. Teachers, every teacher I know hates this. Teachers who are excellent teachers are talking about quitting. Teachers who've been doing this for decades are talking about quitting because this sucks so bad. We're not avoiding the classroom because we want to. We're avoiding the classroom because we refuse to kill our students and their families by putting us in the classroom and having spread happen in the classroom. In our county, 50% of our cases are from our Latino population, while only 25% of our population is. Which kids are the ones you think are going to end up back in their schools and spreading into their families? It's the families and the kids that are already being most impacted by COVID. I appreciate very much your resolution to take this through the semester. And I appreciate Director Medina's talking about taking it to the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just remind everyone that we do have a timer and it's a two minute time limit. Thank you. Next up is Janelle Payne.
Hello, my name is Janelle Payne. I am a teacher at Montgomery High School. Uh, I do follow a lot of what has been said tonight and I appreciate, again, what Director Medina mentioned earlier in his questions and comments. I do want to point out that a summer wedding in Maine that violated state guidelines has made national news because it has resulted in 175 cases and seven deaths. And the seven dead did not attend the wedding, but rather contracted COVID directly from someone who did attend or indirectly from someone who was the roommate of someone who attended the wedding. Six of the seven deaths occurred in a rehab center, yes, but that is not a nursing home impacting only our most elderly and vulnerable. As Mr. Micah Carlin Goldberg just stated, the school openings in Florida have proved disastrous. In Sonoma County, according to our local statistics, 881 Sonoma County kids aged five to 17 have already contracted the virus and an additional 203 children under the age of five. And that is with distancing measures in place and our schools closed. What would opening our schools do to those numbers? And by extension, what would opening our schools do to the number of negative outcomes for those who do contract the disease? How many deaths are acceptable in the name of reopening schools? Doctors admittedly do not know the long-term consequences of this disease. And we must not simply look at fatality rates when determining when and how we open our schools. Just because kids, quote, "don't die," doesn't mean that they are not seriously negatively impacted. I implore the board to continue what it has done and follow the recommendations of leading scientists, doctors and public health officials. While distance learning is admittedly not ideal, it is the best decision to make right now in this time. We all want normal, but normal is not an option right now. COVID sucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dylan Harper.
Hi. As a teacher with a compromised immune system, there's no way for me to view a day like yesterday that saw nearly 40 new cases in Sonoma County and the complete lack of clarity from the district as to what will happen to teachers and students like me and feel any sense at all of safety at the idea of returning to school. I really just want to urge the board to be patient and not consider reopening until it is entirely safe for all individuals in our district to do so, including those who are especially vulnerable to COVID. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Will Lyon.
Hello, this is Will Lyon, uh, the president of Santa Rosa Teacher Association. I also happen to be a once-in-future English teacher at Santa Rosa High School. And I have a 10-year-old, uh, fifth grader at Proctor Terrace. I don't think you have a choice tonight. You, you have to extend this until January. That's easy. The numbers are horrible and we just absolutely are not ready to go at the beginning of Q2. That's not an issue. Following what, what Director Medina said, going forward, if the numbers do get better and, uh, in the future, and we are able to go in, two weeks is not enough time. If the governor said, you know, we have to be off the watch list for two weeks, but that doesn't mean that two weeks from now or two weeks from any point, we'd be able to jump back in. We have a lot of issues that have to get solved before we can grow our capacity to get back in. One of them is class size. We have classes, we have a class right now, uh, AP, uh, government class that has 50 students in it. You can't divide that by two and call it a cohort. They won't fit in a classroom. We have lots of classrooms that theoretically have 16 students could fit in there. But when you actually go in with a tape measure, the little red dots are not far enough apart to make six feet of distance. We don't have enough PPE at all sites yet. We already have staff members who are quarantined right now and schools are closed. So it's not a theoretical problem. It's already a problem, uh, right now. We, before we can open back up, because we've made all of our decisions with the distance learning, we don't have enough subs, we don't have enough janitors, we don't have enough nurses. I could say more, but I want to honor the two minutes. I don't think you have a choice to make tonight, but I'm glad that you're early on it and making the decision early. And we're going to have to be early in the future, even if the numbers do get better. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Lily Medina. And Lily, before you talk, I just want to tell everyone that, um, this is the maximum number of hands that we can have raised right now. Lily, are you there?
My name is Kelly Sparrow, which is showing up under my daughter's name. I'm going to speak really fast with two bits. I'm speaking tonight to respectfully request that the board reject the recommendation to stay in distance learning until the end of December. The reason is simple. The recommendation is not tied to the current local data. Superintendent spoke about the tier assignment on September 5. In the most recent tier assignment of September 15, we dropped from 14.2 to 10.1 new cases per 100,000 per day. The numbers in our county are continuing to climb each day. This last week, new cases were mostly in the 30s out of 500,000 population, which using the state formula puts us at, or nearly at, the levels required to be in tier two. In tier two, Santa Rosa City Schools can reopen in a hybrid model after 14 days. We spent almost an entire summer getting ready for a hybrid model. There is no waiver requirement under the 14 days by the Sonoma County Department of Health. There is no approval of a hybrid model that is required by the Department of County Health. This is clearly stated in the document titled "School Reopening Options" issued by Governor Newsom and the California Department of Public Health and attached to the board agenda. The joint letter relied on by the board is dated August 19th and relies on very outdated data and information. All I am asking is that the board refrain from imposing another quarter-long ban on in-person instruction without regard to the local data that is continuing to decline. It is only September 16, yet decisions are being made from three months from now. The decision is premature and it's not just the data, it's the survey and the funding issues. The kids have a choice who can opt out of distant, of in-person instruction and choose distance learning. But those families that want to do in-person instruction are not being given the same choice. If we enter the red tier, tier two, 14 days they're out, we should be given the choice to decide whether we go back to school or not, since the other families are being given this choice. They can opt out. We can't opt in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Atusa Malanazade.
Yes, thank you. This is Atusa Malanazade. I am a parent and, um, been a resident of Santa Rosa for many years. I have three children in, uh, Santa Rosa City School. One just went to college, but was through the COVID and one in middle school and high school. And, uh, I would like to ask the board to reject the idea of, uh, moving the distance learning to later, any later in December or January. And I actually am a healthcare worker and I strongly believe in science. I've been watching the whole presentation. I really appreciate the data you present. And I want to let you know that I absolutely follow the science and I agree with it. However, we need to make a plan to do this safely. I think of teachers as essential workers and I think our children's are suffering. I watch my, uh, kids who are actually pretty advanced and fortunate and during IV classes, struggle and, um, fall behind. My middle school can't write and read really well and has a level as he should be. So it's really affecting them and there are kind of more fortunate ones. So I would like to ask for you to please consider, um, starting making plans right now to what we can do as parents to help you and also increase state funding to make sure our teachers are protected with the right equipment, with the right funding. And I will fight for you to every bit and get our kids to be able to get back in school in a safe manner because COVID is not going anywhere. and get our kids to be able to get back in school in a safe manner, because COVID is not going anywhere. And I wanted to also comment on the fact of the flu that you were concerned about. Flu rates are the lowest it's ever been at this time, because the mask and distance also helps flu. So I really believe that we need to work together as parents and teachers to make sure our teachers are protected, but to get our kids back in school and start planning now, and involve parents. I am hundred percent sure that many parents will pitch in and do everything they can to support the teachers to ensure a safe environment for teachers and kids to go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Hannah Hoffman.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Hannah Hoffman. I'm a teacher and a parent with students in Santa Rosa City Schools. And speaking tonight as a teacher and a parent, I really appreciate you using science as a guide to keeping us safe. I'd like to also just remind everybody that schools are indeed still open, and we're still working away here harder than ever. We very much appreciate the community's support to keeping teachers, staff, and our children safe, and I'm asking the board to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tammy Afonso.
I am Tammy Afonso. I am president of Chapter Seventy-Five. We're the classified members of this district. I have spent two days with members calling me and crying. They're afraid. They are feeling that they're not being heard and they're not being listened to. They're not, they're being used as instructional assistants. While a teacher is instructing students at home, they have to get the students on the Chromebooks, make sure that they're paying attention, help the student, and then they have recess, and then they come back in and they do it all over again. And then they have lunch, and they come back and they do it all over again. That's called a classroom. Our members do not understand if they are going to be in the classroom with the students while the teacher is at home instructing the students. Whose life are they looking at? And now there is concern that COVID is now going into the younger children. We need to look at what we're doing. We need to consider all of the lives in our district, not just a few. Our members are asking for someone to come and check it out. I'm going tomorrow morning at seven forty-five. I encourage any of the board members who want to come with me to Hidden Valley School so we can see what's happening. I'm saddened by all of this. Our members are stressed. I think it is awesome that on Wednesdays, we're going to have yoga for the teachers. What about the classified? What about the classified PD Day where they could be learning how to keep themselves safe, how to keep the children safer? We're, we're being set aside, and we need your help. So please, if someone could come tomorrow and meet me with me at seven forty-five at the childcare at Hidden Valley, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amy Bowen. Amy, are you there?
Amy, it's on mute. Okay, I thought I got it off. There I am. Thank you for calling on me. I too am supportive, supportive of science-based decision-making, and I am supportive of our hard-working teachers. I want us to keep them safe, but I believe this is the wrong-minded and too early decision to make to keep us on distance learning through December. I understood quite some months ago that the proper protective equipment had been purchased. What I'm understanding right now is that we are doing additional testing, and I'm not understanding the detail that you said that that's going to cost the district money, but yes, we do need to have more testing as we go back to hybrid. But the bottom line is, we seem to be headed towards Tier Two, the red tier. When we get to the red tier, we need to go back to at least hybrid onsite education. That's the mandate, to do in-person education to the greatest extent possible. I hear you saying that some of our student population is at risk, and you're going to get waivers for them while we're still in the purple. Actually, all of our students are being harmed by this continued time on distance learning. So we all need to figure out how to get our students back as quickly as possible to hybrid. The virus, as that health professional mentioned, who's also a parent, the virus is not going away, so we all need to learn to live with it. I also resent that during this limited two-minute time, we've heard from a lot of teachers, including Mr. Lyons, who are already very well represented in this process by weekly meetings with representatives of the board. The teachers and the parents and the families, I really feel that we, our voices have not been heard. And by cutting our time down so that more teachers and Mr. Lyons himself can be heard, I really think that puts us at a disadvantage. So I'm supportive of teachers. I'm supportive of the science. Let's figure out how to do this properly.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Jimenez.
Sorry, it took me a while to unmute myself. I am a parent of a middle school student and high school student in Santa Rosa City Schools, as well as a teacher in another Sonoma County district at the secondary level, and I very much appreciate all the work and effort that is going into this decision-making and the science behind it. I would like to agree that as much as possible of current data could be used moving forward. That would be ideal, although I know that that can be problematic in terms of delays in getting information. However, what I'd more like to speak to is what's being, what can be done better in the current distance learning model, and to really strongly stress that if and when hybrid is moved to, that there needs to be a tremendous amount of planning and preparation that goes into doing hybrid. It is not that easy to transition to that, as we're starting to see as teachers when we look at how we're doing distance learning. So really, I'd really like to see, as the board makes its decisions, if it is meant to make it ahead of time so that all effort can go into improving distance learning as we move forward, as well as making a hybrid a model that would actually work, then I'm all for it. I really am concerned about the disparities across districts in the county with how the state legislative mandate around direct instruction and live instructions being applied. The Zooms that my children are experiencing are thirty minutes out of an eighty-minute period. And as a teacher, I completely understand how challenging it is. But in my district, I'm required to Zoom for an hour of that eighty minutes, and then give a twenty minutes asynchronous instruction. So I'd really like to see the district use that Wednesday time to support its teachers in really improving and creating more of an equitable and equivalent model of education moving forward in distance learning, as well as, as you move to hybrid, because right now it's not. Kids are having to learn so much on their own, and it's not working. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christine Snyder.
Thumbs up if you can hear me. Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for all of your efforts. This is a daunting task, and I do not envy the decision-makers and the complexity of this process. I don't know where I'm more conflicted, whether it be as a teacher myself or as a parent. As a teacher, I'm working so hard, but I know I'm going a little off the grid compared to other people who have spoken tonight, but I know where I'm most effective, and that's in the classroom, to be with my students. And it's all my students are at their best with me in the classroom, whether they are at risk or not. And I believe that, at least at school, there's one stable condition, and that's the classroom. And at distance learning, the connection's unstable. Their home life may be unstable. There's so many other factors that are against them during distance learning. But as a parent, I guess I get even more sad, because I look at my daughter, who's a senior in high school, and frankly, she's just sad. It's her last year of high school, and it's spent behind a closed door, facing a computer screen. She's just sad. She's normally motivated, energetic, vibrant, and this has done nothing but deflate her as a person. She's been looking so much forward to her final volleyball season of her high school career, and her biggest fear is that it just won't happen. I know this is such a difficult situation, and it almost is a lose-lose at this time. Everybody is affected. At the elementary level, it's the academics. At the secondary level, it's social-emotional. I don't know what is more important, and neither one is more important than the other, but I just ask that you carefully consider your decisions regarding reopening, and consider what is best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Megan Sherman.
Can you hear me okay? Yes. Great. I just, I was actually wanting to just comment on some things that were shared earlier in the presentation. I, one thing that really struck me was this idea that secondary is not a focus, that no one's talking about it. I think that's really disappointing. Whether you're in elementary school or high school, you're still a kid. You still have social-emotional needs. You still have, and need to interact with your friends. There's learning loss. So I would just sort of pose a question back to all of you, which is how do you get the community, the parents involved, and focusing on secondary so that's not lost? And then my second point was just, it doesn't sound as if we're ready, should we move to red? What I was hearing tonight is, if we were in red, we could move forward, but there's a long list of things that we're not ready to do. So even if our numbers looked great last week, would we have gone into hybrid mode in October? And families have an expectation, and that was what we, we had the option to elect whether we wanted hybrid or not, believing that if the numbers came around, we would actually get that opportunity. So to the extent that more planning can be done, thinking ahead to all the things we need to do so that should we have that data move in our direction, we don't have another meeting like this at the end of the year where we say, well, statistically, we're ready to go, but as a district, we're not, therefore, we're still not going into hybrid. I think that would be also incredibly disappointing, mostly for the students. I have two, two high school students in the district, both who are getting by with this system, but feel like this year could be a loss for them. And they've even said to that, is this just the last year? Should we just chalk it up that we're not going to be back at school this year? So on that note, I would just encourage all of you to really try to think about returning safely, what the mindset is to getting us back. I know you're trying. I know you're in a tough spot. But I think that if we're creative together and we kind of design our way through this, we could be in a great position should the numbers go in our, in our direction. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is Amber Robinson.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes. Okay. Hi, so I am Amber. I currently work for childcare with the district, and I guess I would just like to share a few concerns as far as, I understand the idea of us keeping a distance model. I actually have a son who's in fourth grade at the school that I lead for childcare, and I see the effects on him every day. And, you know, now we have new students coming in who are from other schools, other districts, who are, we are trying to help facilitate in childcare to help them, and I fully support that, except for the fact that we have now become teachers essentially, or aides, like definitely assistants. You know, these kids are getting on Zooms for thirty, forty-five minutes, and then they're kind of left for most of the rest of the day to self-sufficiently, you know, figure out their work, and they have pages beyond pages beyond pages that are being assigned, and these teachers are working their best, and I totally understand. It's such a hard situation all the way around. It's just for me, I'm sitting with one student for thirty to forty-five minutes. It's a second grader. He doesn't know what he's doing. He doesn't know how to get through something, and I'm having to walk him through every minute of every assignment. And, you know, I'm not, this is not, I understand everyone is doing different jobs, and I understand that we're all having to adapt and to pivot. But my fear is that I have staff who are crying because they feel like they're not smart enough. They can't get on the computers. They don't know how to help these kids the way that they feel like they should be helped. So if we're going to be continuing in a distance, I just ask that we get a little bit more support in the places where we're actually having kids in the rooms. So that's really all I have to say, but thank you all for all of your hard work, and I appreciate working with more of you in the future.
Thank you. Next is Tyson Russler.
Hi, my name is Tyson Russler. I am a science teacher over at Maria Creo. I just want to echo the sentiments of Micah Carlin Goldberg from earlier, and I think it was Janelle Payne also, who spoke to the fact that it is not safe yet to have our students in the classroom, unfortunately. As much as all of us really, really desperately want things to be normal, normal is not an option right now. Whether or not COVID is here is not a choice that faces us. It is here. Our choice is how we keep our families and our community safe. As we can see from events in Florida and other states who've reopened too early, doing so now would make our schools a vector for transmission to the entire community. It would endanger all of Sonoma County to do that so soon. Thank you, guys, all of you, for following the science and looking what the data tells us. Unfortunately, it still tells us that we're not ready to go back. The other thing I want to thank you all for is that by making the decision that we knew we would stay in distance learning until October, it's allowed teachers to plan ahead and to provide the best distance learning experience we can. Giving us a similar set of, a similar decision now, and the security to plan all the way through December, will let us make distance learning even better. In the short time I have, I would like to try to manage expectations a little bit. The choices between distance learning and hybrid, not normal in-person, my concern is that hybrid education would actually be worse than what we're doing right now, more stressful for students, more distancing. Right now, I can see my students' faces. We can talk face-to-face. I can meet with them one-on-one. They can work together in small groups. In person, none of that would be possible. We'd be six feet apart, masked up. I can't hand out materials. Everything would still be on the Chromebooks because I can't collect anything. It would be scarier and worse. It would be worse than what we have now with additional risk and additional complication. I don't want to put my students through that. Anyway, thank you all. I know this is a hard decision, and I appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Taylor.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Taylor. I am a substitute for Santa Rosa City Schools. Um, as a substitute, that's my primary source of income, and I've been out of work essentially since March. I've been having to rely on my secondary income, which has also been heavily impacted by COVID. And despite all of that, I believe that it is the safer and better choice to stay in distance learning through December and possibly for the rest of the school year. It's just not safe to go back. There's a lot of people who are talking about looking at the science involved, and that's wonderful. But, for example, according to the county statistics, we had thirty-nine new cases last night, which is far above the, I think it was seven or eight that were mentioned in the superintendent's presentation. That's going to only get worse over the holiday season, and I don't think we can risk the immense increase that we're going to see as people try to, you know, people want normal. I don't think there's anybody here who doesn't want to go back to normal. But normal isn't an option right now. I think I absolutely hear parents who want their students to go to sports, go to extracurriculars, get to see their friends, but that's not an option right now, not safely. It's really easy to look at some things that are abstract like this and say, it'll happen to someone else, but it's going to happen to some of us, and I think that's a really hard thing that people are going to have to deal with if we go back in person. Thank you for your time, and thank you for supporting the district.
Thank you. Next is Max Freitas.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you. I've been district employee and counselor at Ridgeway High School and Nueva Vista Teen Parent Program for thirty years. I'm really speaking to advocate for our classified staff. As the teen parent counselor, we have a teen parent program that also provides childcare for our young moms and dads that need to for our young moms and dads that need to be able to have it in order to attend school. Our ratio when that is operating is 12. The current operating procedure will be 14, and our classified staff will be with them from 8:00 in the morning until possibly 5:00 in the afternoon. Normally, they are there from 8:30 until 3:00. So who's paying for their extra time and for cleanup and sanitizing and all the rest of it? I'm also a JC counselor, a JC instructor, and we have decided to extend our, you know, remote learning through the end of this year, school year. So I'm very concerned. I mean, we have one teacher that had, one of our childcare teachers that put out a plea to us at Ridgeway, asking for PPE in order to be able to open safely. Now, I don't know if that's been resolved or not, but it was inconscionable to me that that was something she was forced to do because she needed it to be able to protect herself and the children. I hope you all take that into consideration as you look at reopening things like childcare and our classified staff and us going forward. Thank you for your time. I know this isn't easy.
Thank you. Next is Robert Fuentes.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Just wanted to mention several things. I think the teachers that we have are essential employees, essential. The distance learning model, and I'm speaking for the K through like third grade, the distance learning model is not working for them. I have three children, all of them are having major issues with distance learning. They don't feel comfortable with it, they're frustrated by it, their frustration turns to our frustration. I think it's important for someone to understand that for the younger children, this is a completely new ballgame for them and something they're totally ill-equipped to prepare for. There is no longer learning. They are, I've seen them walk away and shake their heads at me and say, I don't want to do this anymore. I don't know what's necessary. I think we need to have some kind of hybrid program so the kids can go to school and be instructed by a teacher who will help them and help them to a much greater extent that's happening today. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Tapco.
Hello, I'm a local Sonoma County business owner. I own multiple bars across the county, and I am terrified to open up my bars, and I'm just a business owner that's struggling to survive and barely getting by, and I don't want to make anything political, I just want to say thank you to the teachers, teacher staffs, everybody else. That's it. I'm done. See you later.
Thank you. Next is Sonia Beerbaum.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Is it okay?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sonia Beerbaum. I'm a senior at Montgomery High School, and I think that I represent a pretty diverse group. I'm a choir member, I'm a varsity athlete, I'm a member of student government, as well as I take many IB classes. My mother, Atusa, spoke on here earlier, and I would just like to point out that some of the deficits the students are feeling, I can validate what Ms. Snyder said about students just feeling sad, and though we are sad, I can say that we are not ready to throw in the towel. We are sad, but we are not hopeless, and what we are asking is that you don't throw in the towel yet either. We are feeling the educational deficit for sure, because students are feeling like they're falling behind and that others are advancing past them, and we're worried about how that's going to affect our learning when we do return to in-person classes. I am worried because I don't feel like this is an equal education situation. I feel like there are home problems that aren't documented that still make living situations hard, much less learning situations, and so I think in-person and social circumstances need to be created to accommodate for those people. So all we are asking, we are not asking for normal, we are asking that we don't throw in the towel and we start making compromises to try and solve some of these problems. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Benelli-Mott.
Hi, thanks, thank you. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to consider allowing our students to return to hybrid learning. I have two reasons that I'm concerned about the remote learning model. One is the vast inequities that remote learning has resulted in, and the other is the mental health damage being heaped upon our students with remote learning. I feel like these problems must be addressed. For some families, they're able to hire a pandemic pod teacher or be in a learning pod at the Boys and Girls Club at a very high cost, but for many of our families, this is not possible. As the PBS NewsHour has said, "The race to set up learning pods threatens to vastly deepen inequities in access to education." In contrast to SRCS, consider what San Francisco schools are doing. There, they've set up 45 learning hubs at parks, libraries, and rec centers across the city. Other Bay Area stating even throughout the country in places like New York City, they've been able to bring children back into hybrid learning. All of these locations have the same financial and logistical obstacles, yet they are innovating their way to solutions. I would like to ask that we do the same. I found it very disheartening earlier when a board member was speaking about calling it for the rest of the year. I have a high school student, this would be devastating to her. I also want to point out that our teens are the group most likely to be at risk for mental health issues such as stress, anxiety, and even at risk of suicide. This is something that we must talk about, and we cannot forget about our high school students in this way. I realize I'll have little impact on the decision tonight, however, as an educator for over 20 years myself, I felt compelled to speak and to advocate for our students and ask that we again re-center our kids into this conversation. Thank you so much for all of your work that you're doing.
Thank you. Next is Janine Jackson.
Hi there. I just wanted to comment that, you know, I work in an emergency department, so when this first came about, you know, we were all freaked out, you know, and we just tried to stay calm, and we just did the best that we could. So everyone just needs to do the best they can, because like everyone keeps on saying, this is not going away, this is a virus, we're going to have it. Unfortunately, what I have to say is that at some point, everyone's going to get it in some type of form. It's like we all say, it's not going to go away, it's here to stay. These kids, this, I have a child that is in a public high school, and then a child that's in a private fifth grade class, and I'm hoping that that class opens up soon for her, because even though she's done very well when she's been in person, this has just been horrible on her. You know, they've always been used to small classroom sizes where she goes and stuff, but now, even with her being at home, she's just having a horrible time, and these kids are just being so negatively effective. And the other thing is, is you know, when we talk about, you know, people and the way that this spreads, it's like people are still getting out with their friends and stuff. So it's not like, you know, it's not like people are just staying home and being, you know, so they don't keep on spreading the disease, and unfortunately, yes, I do see and I do understand people that are compromised, and those are the people that we all need to be careful around, and that if their jobs put them at stake, they need to have some type of relief to where they can either do, you know, the still the in-person classes. Sorry about that, I have a dog barking. But anyway, I just wanted to comment on that, and hey, I will volunteer to be one of those people because I'm not afraid to be around it, because I've been around it since, you know, January, February. So that's what I wanted to say. But please open up the schools, and I wish Dr. Mace was on this tonight also.
Thank you. Next is Montater Moron.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I am also a student at Montgomery High School. I'm the vice president for the ASP class for this year. I'm also a senior. I am, I wanted to speak because I wanted to second Sonia. As a student, as somebody who has lived through a war zone for most of his life, I understand what it means to have a probability for your life. Back in my country, if you had to leave your house, you had pretty much like a 50/50 probability of dying. Now imagine if that same probability is here in the United States. Obviously, it's not. However, with the current circumstances with COVID-19, I think it's an appropriate comparison because if that one kid who contracts COVID-19 and somehow that one probability clips in, that one entire school is at risk, all the teachers, all the students, any interaction between the students could have resulted into a mass location for that COVID in that one school. And then like, what would happen to the families too? Like imagine this, imagine your own family too, with any elderly people in it, who might contract the COVID-19 virus just because that one kid came to school and slipped through the cracks. And so I'm asking the board meeting to not consider going back to hybrid mode. Thank you. That's my special.
Thank you. And our last comment is from Katie Barr.
I'm Katie Barr, I'm the principal of Maria Creo High School. I apologize for, I wasn't quite ready for that. So I would like to first say thank you to Dr. Kitamora and the cabinet for all their support and their hard work in terms of supporting all of our sites. Secondly, I just wanted to go back and kind of address Dr. or Director Medina's comment or question about the anxiety that we're experiencing on our school sites. As a site administrator, I think I can address that a little bit. I don't think I've ever seen our staff as stressed as what we're experiencing currently. And at Creo, we've experienced fires and power outages and a multitude of things, and I've been at that site for, this is my fifth year, and this is the first time I've really witnessed staff just pretty much breaking down, and it's not, it's not the situation, it's just the load, it's the load. It's the constant, did you take your attendance, and how are you taking attendance, and how are you doing that through Zoom? And it's the, where am I posting things for Zoom? And it's, I can guarantee you, probably every staff member, classified and certified, are getting probably somewhere between 200 and 300 emails every day, which is after doing your job, kind of humanly impossible to be able to answer all those emails as well. So it's, I know that there's the fear portion of it, but I think really what we need to be aware of is just the immense load that our staffs are carrying, and the weight that they're carrying, and then in terms of, you know, they're learning a whole new style of teaching on top of everything else that's going on, and there's little time left for them.
Thank you. President, no more hands raised.
Thank you to all the commentators, commenters. I especially appreciate the students who took the time to wait and phone in and be here with us to express how they're feeling. Board, this is an action item, and it's our time for discussion now. Okay, so I'm seeing three hands right now, and I know that board member, Director Lopez, Omar Lopez, also wanted to say something too. So let's start with Director Sheffield, let's move on to Director McCormick, and then Director Close, and then Director Omar Lopez.
Okay, I'll start. I did appreciate hearing from the public comment, we heard from parents and teachers and students and even a small business owner. And I personally, I want to speak to the frustrated parents out there because I totally hear you, I all lean in, you can see it in my eyes, right? I'm exhausted. I have a first grader and I have a third grader, and I've been working from home since March, and I live in a tiny house, and some days, my kids hate me, some days, my wife hates me, some days, I hate all of them, I'm just joking, we love each other, but it's been really, really hard, and I've been putting in on top of working, you know, from home, my late hours that I have to try to make up because I'm instructing my kids, I'm helping them, and it's constant. They're not old enough to do it themselves, so they need constant attendance, and we're all going crazy. And, you know, I think it goes without saying that what we all want is a return to reality. But, you know, I also work for a healthcare system, I work in healthcare, and my wife works in healthcare too, and even though we are so frustrated and exhausted, at the end of the day, our reality is grounded in facts, and when you look at what the school districts have received as far as guidelines go, we've received guidelines, but no resources. The guidelines say that schools that opt to reopen should make classrooms and school equipment sanitized at to an adequate level. What does that mean? How is that defined, and who does this work? You know, it's not like what you see at the grocery store, Trader Joe's, where they spray the shopping carts. I have a six-year-old who, you know, he licks his desk, you know, he licks other children. I don't know how you can, how this type of work can be done and where are the resources to do that. The guidelines say that students should practice safe distancing. Who enforces this? You have a population of, you know, 16,000 students who have been kept isolated, you cannot hold them back from hugging and expressing affection. The guidelines say that we're to restrict or reduce contact between different groups of students. How is that done? The guidelines say we can move classes outside or to larger classrooms if possible, and I like this idea, yay, outside public education. They also say to screen students or ask their family to screen them. Who does the screening? Who, if the district is qualified to do these screenings, and who is going to take the risk to do that? That's a big ask. And the problem with screening, according to CDC, is that about 40% of cases are asymptomatic. This means that people who are infected without symptoms are spreading it unknowingly, and they're spreading it to grandmas and grandpas and are most vulnerable in the population. The CDC also says the chance of transmission for people with no symptoms is 75%. So of the 746,191 confirmed coronavirus cases in California as of last week, September 10th, 76,136 of them were children between 0 and 17. And how many of them were spreading without showing symptoms? And even though children have been identified at lower risk of suffering serious illness, it doesn't mean that they aren't spreading it to, again, the vulnerable populations. So how do we as a district, how can we address this? This is too much, we can't, we're not qualified to address it. And so this is why we have to look to the facts that are presented, this science-based truths. The American Academy of Pediatrics, which is the country's top association of pediatrics, issued a caution for policymakers that urges strongly the application of science and evidence and not politics in this. So that's really important. When we, I mean, I don't know, when, I think when parents ask me, is it safe to send our kids back to school right now? When will it be safe? I say, I don't know, ask your pediatrician, they're the experts. I think it was Micah who brought up the NEA, the National Education Association, having a website, a COVID reporting website, and he brought up cases in Florida. I looked at California last night, after everybody went to bed, because this is the only time I can do my work, in my 159 in my fifteen-hour day yesterday. In California, since August, the first month of return to school, there were twenty-four districts in the state that reported cases. And it also needs to be noted that Sonoma County Department of Health Services has linked cases to preschools and childcare facilities. My neighbor's preschool over the summer was one of those facilities. And the poor four-year-old had to be on quarantine. And we were freaking out in my household because we didn't know when, you know, that, when that, you know, four-year-old was exposed. So lastly, I've taken up enough time. But lastly, as far as opening our schools, I think that the well-being of our children and our teachers and our staff, it requires substantial new investment in schools. And relief funding right now is currently being held up in DC. We don't have a choice. If we are to safely reopen schools, we will need a tremendous boost from the federal government and from the state and getting the resources to do it effectively. And I don't think we're there yet. All in my comments there.
Okay, thank you. Director McCormick.
Man. I am so divided on this. This is a really, really hard decision for me. This is not easy. And I feel like our community is strongly divided on this as well, as seen by the comments tonight. And I appreciate everybody that shared. I will say this. I am not comfortable opening the discussion to stay in distance learning through June at this point. I am definitely not comfortable with that. You know, I work at SRJC and I am in that situation as an instructor. And I'm facing that situation as an instructor right now. And I hear the argument, definitely hear the argument about, you know, having more time to plan and make arrangements. There are some advantages to that, but it also like ripped my soul out when I found out we were going to be distance learning. Because as a teacher, when I'm wearing my teacher hat, it's just, this is not working right now at the way it is. And I understand it's not normal. And I understand that we have to protect everybody involved. And I understand that the points of contact that happen through schools is enormous. And so we have to be super careful. But I think, I think because we are so divided on this, on this, this scale balancing that we're trying to balance, where we're keeping everybody safe and being responsible and just really at this moment, not having the resources from the state and the federal government and the money and things set up to really keep people safe is a major problem. But I also think the learning loss that's happening, the mental health problems it's having, it's starting to like, the scales are like this, you know, for me in my head. And it's very hard for me. So I, I I think we absolutely have to do more. If we, if we move, if we go forward with this decision to accept this proposal, approve this proposal to stay in a distance learning model through December tonight, we have to use that time to innovate and figure out the outdoor ed situation. Like absolutely, a hundred percent. I am such a huge supporter of that. And I just think it's reasonable. And the thing that I just personally struggle with, and I know that our teachers and our parents and our students are struggling with this, is that there's just so many inconsistencies out there. There are, you know, club sports teams practicing and there's things meeting. And I understand it's different. We're dealing with sixteen thousand students and, you know, almost two thousand faculty and staff. And so it's a much bigger number. But I think we need to figure it out and we need to innovate. And if we, if we approve this tonight, we need to take that time and figure something out for the spring. Because I'm just not okay with doing this to June. And that's just me. That's me as a board member. That's me as a teacher. And that's me of two parents or a parent of two students in college. Yeah, I'm just really struggling with that. And I, the thing that I just can't, for all that I want to do to keep the door open for some sort of hybrid before December eighteenth, I just don't feel like the school district is protected and has the resources that we need to do it well. That's the thing that's kind of tipping the scale right now. But man, I really, I just, I really want to vote no on this tonight. I just, I'm just like an eternal optimist. And I'm just like, if there's any chance, so many people are just dying for that hybrid option and an ability to opt in as well as having the choice to opt out. But I just don't know how our school district is protected if we do that. And I don't know how we're going to pay for it. And I don't know how we're going to responsibly cover that risk. So I'll wait. And I'm still really listening to my colleagues here on the board. And I'm taking seriously everybody's comments this evening. And, but we have, we have got to figure out a way to do meet in the middle somewhere this spring and not just stay here. And I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but I know it means outside. And, and I don't, and I'm thrilled that the Learning House is exploring some of this. But I think that the people who chose hybrid would even be more willing for some outside education because they wanted to do hybrid. And so I feel like we need to commit to that. And I just want to really send that message to staff. And, and I know it's a huge ask and a heavy lift, but we got, we got to figure that piece of the puzzle out. And I'm just really, really torn about this. And this is not an easy decision for me. And again, I thank everybody who's weighed in on it. So thank you.
We are going to take a second to switch interpreters right now before we move on to Director Close and Director Omar Lopez and then Director Medina, I think.
Thank you, President Fong.
Manieri.
We're all set. Thank you. Director Close.
Thank you. Okay, Director Sheffield said it well. We are, we are not, based on science, we are not ready to safely go back to school. I don't think any of us feel comfortable sending kids or our staff, you know, mandating that staff go back into a place with a known risk. I think we've heard and have heard from a lot of folks that this is really hard for parents. This is unbelievably hard for parents. It's also unbelievably hard for teachers. Teachers are working, I think, twice as hard. They didn't get the break. They are, I bet five percent of them thought they were going to sign up for a job that was tech-heavy when they went to school to become a teacher. And I bet a lot of them don't love tech. This is, this is a job that doesn't attract people who are lovers of tech. And now they are, they work at screens all day long. And they are people who chose to work with, with little humans and have a, have a one-to-one impact with them. And so this is, this is really hard for teachers doing what they're doing right now. And the mental health impacts of this are, I think, are worse than, than we probably, than the numbers show yet. We do, I just read an article that said at least a quarter of Americans are experiencing depression for the first time based on COVID. And, and I do think, you know, we had, I think, I was sorry to miss last week's meeting when we talked about Suicide Awareness Month. I know that great stress can drive the last person you'd ever think of to that point. And so this is a scary situation, I think, mental health-wise. And we also know that there's learning loss happening, major learning loss happening. So this is sort of bad all around. You know, we can't safely go back. The other thing is that there are a lot of people who talk about lower infection rates or lower fatality rates. And what doesn't get a whole lot of press, but is out there, if you look, are the people who are also getting this disease for a really long time. There are all kinds of ways to get COVID. And some people get it and they're over it quickly. And some people get it and, and die. And then there are people in the middle who have it for months and have lasting impact. So it's, it's pretty dangerous. So it's sort of bad all the way around. Then hybrid, this hybrid model, I really give it to the staff to come up with, I think, the best possible model they could, safety-wise, physical safety-wise for a hybrid model. But I think it, practically speaking, will be impossible for our teachers or drive them over the edge. Because now that you, now you're going to ask them to prepare for in-class learning and, and online distance learning and deal with two groups, at least of cohorts of students and managing those groups separately. And I don't think they're enough hours in the day, even if they never take any time off to actually adequately prepare for that. So I think it's asking kind of the impossible. So it really, it really leaves us, you know, with one option to do this in a way that is going to protect learning, going to protect mental health, going to give, you know, keep people, people safe. And that is outdoors. And I've been banging this drum since day one on this. And I, and, you know, superintendent and cabinet, we have been through a lot together. You know, you and me, fires and everything. And I know how hard you work, but I'm begging you to work harder on this. I'm actually, what I'm begging you to do is to stop working on hybrid learning and to start working on, on outdoor ed, to throw it away because it's not going to be possible for teachers to do and for them to maintain their sanity. And I am going to, because I tested it to see if I would have the option. I'm actually going to share my screen right now. And I am showing you a picture from nineteen oh seven in Brooklyn. And this is an article in the New York Times and I will post the link in the chat. And it talks about outdoor classrooms. And it talks about people sitting in, kids sitting in Eskimo sitting bags, which I think we call sleeping bags now. And most people have them and they sell them at Target. And you'll also notice that these kids aren't even wearing masks because we know if you're six or eight feet apart outside, you're pretty doggone safe. And we also know that kids love being outside. And this is, this is, these are outdoor classrooms that they created just by high ceiling rooms and opening all the windows. And there were no infections in these, in these classrooms. And they happened all over the country. And this is the kind of, you know, innovation. But do we call it innovation anymore? Because it happened a hundred plus years ago. But this is what we need to be thinking about, is how do we get kids learning together with teachers? And that is safe. And I feel like this isn't actually an easy answer. And so it is frankly making me crazy that this is not the thing that we're talking about. And I'm getting like passionate and raising my voice and getting choked up because I feel like I'm becoming like the crazy outdoor ed lady, you know? And this is all I can talk about. And, but, but really, I, it's, it's, I don't understand why we're spending time on anything else. We have, and yes, there's a fire season. It's relative longer than ever. It's awful, but right? But it's going to be over. And it rains sometimes, but we have also, we have giant buildings at the fairgrounds that I know the county would let us use. Like there, we have giant gyms that are bigger spaces where, like, we have options. And I think the idea of trying to do school the regular way is a waste of our time. It's a waste of our mental energy. And instead, we need to like, take everything off the table and say, here's what we're stuck with. These are the hazards. These are the things we get. Let's start from scratch. Forget trying to, you know, put the round peg in the square hole because it's not going to, it doesn't fit. It does not fit and it's not safe. And so I wish we could stop spending our time on hybrid learning or when we're going to go back or how we're going to make distance learning great. Because distance learning is not going to be great. It's never going to be great. It's going to be great for the few students who it just, it just works for. It's, it fits for and it's easy for. And it's a nice fit. And they have parents who can support them and they have an environment that it's healthy for them. But otherwise, it's, it's not good, right? It's not, it can be better, but it's still not going to be great. So please, can we stop talking about anything that involves anything that looks like regular school? And can we start talking about outdoor education? Period. And I, I'm going to put this article in the chat. And I really, really hope that we could sit down with County Parks and Rec, with City Parks and Rec, with Landpass, with the Water Agency and say, let's take everything off and start from scratch and really truly innovate here. And it's not, it's a day camp, but, but with, you know, subjects. So thank you for listening to my rant. I can't promise that I'm not going to be the crazy outdoor ed lady every meeting. But because I, I just, I, this is, this is all I see as a solution. So I hope that we can really, really start thinking about this.
Thank you. Director Omar Lopez.
All I have to say was really just echoing what's already been said. But I think one of the big things that I've taken away today has really been the fact that the state and federal governments have done such a great job at putting out these guidelines for us to follow, but have failed to support us. And that's where we are right now. And I think as we all sit here, the reality is we cannot go back to any form of in-person education. We're not in the state criteria. We don't have the funding. We don't have the legal protections. Right now, we can't do that. And so as we look forward, you know, we're looking towards December. The question is, how are we going to, one, you know, if we do come back to this in December, how are we going to make sure that as a district, we are able to function in some way with in-person education? And if that is going to be, you know, outdoor ed, as Jen has said, because, you know, President Fong, you're always talking about revolutionizing education. And this is one of the best chances we have for this. And I think going through with outdoor education is probably one of the best things we can do, especially as we go forward. And I think if we do go through with this, and starting during quarter two, there are some things we need to start addressing and changing and modifying just to make this and starting the best it can be.
Thank you, Director Lopez. Director Medina.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I'll just say is that in nineteen oh seven, they didn't have Zoom. So I wonder if they would have used Zoom instead of being outdoors. I think that everything that we're talking about is critically important. And, and let me just go back to say, I understand poverty. I understand poverty that leads to high-density living situations with no or little space for privacy or a good place to learn, where going to school is often an escape. I understand child and domestic abuse. I understand abuse that can be triggered by and serves oftentimes as venting from the stresses of poverty, of not having enough money to cover bills, stresses that now probably exist much more now than ever. I understand the hope and idea that education can be a path of liberation from this poverty and also a lot of these horrible conditions that cause some of these situations. But I also understand death, what it's like to lose a loved one and the fact that death is a complete end. There's no coming back from it. So I say this to highlight that I not, I don't take these decisions lightly. I understand a lot of the horrible conditions that a lot of our students are living in and the stuff that they're having to go through. I say to highlight the fact that I value life and that making decisions that are going to put people at risk are not decisions that I take lightly. I, I am concerned about our staff and our faculty and the stress that they're dealing with. I know President Alfonso talked about, you know, just some of the stuff that she's learned in these recent couple of days. You know, I trust that our staff will look into it. But, but I think those are part of the stresses, the stresses that everyone is trying to do the best by our students and feeling like we're not doing enough is a stress in itself. And I feel that's part of what our staff are experiencing. But again, life to me is important. You know, if you die, you'll no longer have an opportunity to learn in the future, right? And so that's why these decisions are very critical and important to me. When I say, let's move towards June, I don't take it lightly. And, and I say it looking at the facts on the ground. Yes, I'm hopeful, I want students to go back to school, outdoor ed or not. But, but what I'm seeing doesn't, doesn't paint a picture that that's going to be a reality. So we could talk all pretty, you know, about, oh, well, let's, let's open up before December or whatever. But the facts on the ground don't paint that picture for me. And so making these decisions aren't, aren't something that I take lightly. I hope that, you know, I hear all this talk about outdoor ed and it's nice, it sounds good. I know students would love to be outdoors. But do we, do we even have the type of capacity needed to do that? I don't want to just have us dictate something like that without bringing the teachers and classified staff into that conversation first. I don't want us to get, you know, get ahead of it because where do they stand? How do they feel about that? You know, we need, we need to begin to have those conversations first before we even try to put that out there. Because if they're not, you know, aligned with that or if they're not supportive of that, it's not going to happen effectively. So I, I would, I would halt that with maybe starting to have that conversation first. To me, December 18th, what's on the table? I'm supportive of that. To me, that's, that's a compromise from where, where I feel we should be moving towards, which is June. But anything to not support at least this December 18th thing, date, i- is, is, I, I think just puts our staff in a horrible situation in terms of planning effectively, in terms of making things happen in a planned and appropriate manner. So I think we have to at least support December 18th as is now. And so my only additional question would be, or ask for commitment from staff is, can we get a commitment to maybe look at what some of those current stresses that have been presented by President Alfonso to be looked into? If I see a yes, not.
Yes, yes. Assistant Superintendent Mizera is going to go tomorrow to the childcare site.
Thank you, Director. Director Mary.
Thank you. I, I want to just point out a couple of things. And Director Medina just did that, that what's on the table is a date of December 18th. And I just want to ground us back to what's on the table. And I think that to Director McCarney's point about really needing to be innovative and doing things differently, I see that date as just a date that gives us a little bit of time. I mean, I don't think, I think we probably need more time, but I also, I hear the community and the stressors and it's all real. I mean, I deal with it at my work too, having to manage an internship with 50 students who are all doing distance learning. And we talk about mental health and social emotional health. So I can definitely understand where, where all of these frustrations and emotions are coming from. And I think that if we need more of a reason to try to move into something like outdoor ed, I think we need to really evaluate what we've been doing so far and ask the students and the staff and the teachers what they need. And if this is something that, can you hear me, can you hear me better now? Sorry, I was getting frustrated. So I don't know how much was, got across. But my, my point is that if we need any more of a reason to try to move in the direction of innovation of outdoor ed or whatever that looks like past December 18th, we need to evaluate what we've been doing. We need to be asking students and teachers and staff what they need, what's working, what's not working? What are they willing to do? What are they not willing to do? We need numbers and we need data. And that doesn't necessarily take a lot of time. There are a lot of really great people in our community and in organizations that could help us do that. To the question about resources and capacity, I think that we're so fortunate in Sonoma County to have amazing organizations and agencies like Landpass and the Sonoma Land Trust that have access to these great outdoor spaces. When I think about resources and capacity, the first thing that comes to mind for me is transportation. I know that that's going to be something really big that we're, we need to look into. And now if we're going to try to do anything for the spring. But I think, I think that it's there. I think that there's a lot of opportunity and we should at the very least be having these conversations and exploring these ideas very seriously. Because many people pointed it out, we're going to be living with COVID for a very long time. We don't see a vaccine anytime soon. And even then, what we know about vaccines is that you need herd immunity. If people aren't getting their vaccines, it's not going to work. So I just think that we need to, we need to play the, I don't, I don't know the phrase, the, we need to play for the long term, the long haul. But I really, really want to express my support for outdoor ed and for the proposal that Director Close is putting on the table to really do things, thank you, to play the long game, to, to really look at things in a different light and to do things differently, the end game. Okay, I was wrong. And I also want to say that, that I, I totally hear you, Director Medina, about how hard it is to have experienced a death because of what we're experiencing. We've had a couple of family members as well in our family. And it's really hard. I mean, I don't want to belittle the experiences of a lot of community members right now. The conversation around innovation and outdoor ed is not to discredit the intense suffering that so much of our community is experiencing. I don't really have the energy to articulate that more, but I just want to acknowledge that, that it, that's not what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Dana Cruz.
Thank you to our cabinet for attempting to be scientists and epidemiologists in the face of such lack of guidance and clarity. And, you know, in a, in a world where we're really needing leadership, you have stepped into that space in such beautiful and graceful ways. And you work your butts off and I'm so grateful for that. And, you know, as we have required you to be scientists and epidemiologists, right? That takes away from being able to drive on kind of educational issues, which are really central to this conversation. And I don't want this to be a lost year. And I think that's what we're hearing from our community is that this feels like a lost year in so many ways. Ed, I think my eye bags and wrinkles are just, you know, like, it's so real, working full time, having two distance learning kids. So lucky that my husband still wants to be married to me. That my kid still kisses me on the cheek and say, good night, mom, I love you. Like, this has been the single hardest thing that I think most families have gone through, whether you, you know, you're working from home or you're working outside of your home and having to come home and think about how scary it is for your family that you're coming home after a long day, working with people. I just think about what so many people in our community are going through every day and it's really, really hard. I am completely supportive of setting a date to December 18th. I think we need to focus on educating our children in the world that we live in right now. And what we see, as you said, Director Medina, is that our community still is not privileging and prioritizing and valuing the education of our children. And that just, again, that we cannot make up for the fact that we still have people who are not wearing masks and who are refusing to wear masks and who are protesting wearing masks. We can't, we can't make up for that. This district cannot shoulder that responsibility of those individuals who are acting in such a selfish way. We cannot make up for those actions. And our children are paying for it and our teachers are paying for it and our staff are paying for it. And I don't want to make them pay for it with their lives. So December it is. I think when we look nationally and internationally at what happens when schools open, they shut down very quickly after they open for the first time. That is a churn and energy and cost that we do not have. We are resilient and we are, we are about the bottom of that gas tank as a community right now, across the board. Anybody who works in public service is feeling it in deep, huge ways. So I just want to tell you that I see you and it is my job to make sure that we take care of you as well as our kids. And, you know, December 18th sounds just fine to me. You know, there are ways in which we have allowed for folks to opt in. And those are the folks who signed up for hybrid learning. And, you know, that, that option is still there when it is safe for us to go back. And I am, I am confident based on what we know about what's happening in the state, in our community, in our our country and in the world, that it's not safe to open up until this comes down significantly, until there's a vaccine. So we've been talking a lot about outdoor ed. I want to be really clear, I'm not asking, you know, teachers to then take another whole turn into developing cool, innovative, new programs where you're doing science-based exploratory, like, no. I'm literally talking about doing math in the grass outside. So I'm not asking for anything on top of what is, you know, what you all are so good at doing that our kids miss so much, that our parents miss so much, right? So like teach math outside in the grass with some distance and, you know, and if, and if you need some, I don't know, some microphones or something, got you. But let's just get our kids in front of the teachers that they love and with their classmates and their kids. And we can do that, we can do that really safely outside. We do know science, science does tell us that, that works. So let's put all those things together, math in the grass, ed, math in the grass, that is what it's all about. And so, um, thank you. Thank you, Cabinet, thank you, Diane.
All right, so I will just close this out before we vote. I think that the entire community is in grief, we're grieving and we're pivoting. And I'm going to tell you that I support the December 18th all the way till then. And that's 11 weeks away, that's 11 school weeks away. And I superhear the loss, the parents and kids are finding for not being at school. And it's not working for a lot of kids at home, but it is working for a lot of kids at home. And I wanted to say that our staff, they've pivoted incredibly quickly. So actually, what I'm worried about is, you know, they're working very hard on Zoom distance learning. Hybrid, that is not, a teacher pointed to that, that may not be any better. When we go back to hybrid learning, who's, are we ready for that? Are teachers ready for that? You know, we have to give, we have to give some credence to bandwidth, right? My neighbor who was here with me, she is staying up till midnight every night, just making sure she answers those 200 emails and she's got that science lab, whatever lab you can do on Zoom. So they're working incredibly hard, as is our, as are our administrators. And so, yeah, we can go outside, but we're talking about 16,000 kids. And so that's another thing, it takes time to pivot. And so let's, let's start to pivot and we can maybe pivot for later. But right now, are we ready for hybrid? So that's, that's a question I have. Can we, can we use this time to get ready for hybrid if we know that possibly we're going to go back to it in January? So that gives us some time. We need another survey and I think Dr. Kudimore, you talked about that. So people can change their minds again about what they want. And we also have to look at staff, who's ready to go back and who can't go back. So that's another huge thing. And that's going to take way more than just two weeks after we get into red to decide who is going to be able to come back. And the mixing of kids at the high school, right? That's not going to happen when you have these periods and the kids are going to be, they'll be mixing up. You're not going to keep your 16 person cohort. And so I would say that the staff is already innovating every single day. They are innovating every single day. And to put one more thing on them, we are going to lose people. We're going to lose people sanity. So I want to give us grace on that. We understand it's a loss, it is a grieving time, but we just, we are doing our very best to mitigate the loss. It is not the same, it's never going to be the same, period, end of story, never going to be the same. So we have to keep safe as much as possible. But let's use these next 11 weeks to figure out the best hybrid that possibly can happen. And when we get back to hybrid and people get to choose again, let's do a lot of it outside. But we're pivoting, there's a lack of bandwidth, everyone's working as hard as they can. So we really appreciate all of that. And, you know, kids in high school, seniors and everybody, doesn't matter, first graders need to be together too. That's, that's a price we're all paying, we're just all paying that right now. It's our common shared experience right now and we're, I know we're running in places as much as we can. So I want to thank you, Dr. Kudimore, for the work you're doing and the work your staff is doing and your cabinet is doing. This is huge. You're probably getting 2,000 emails a day. And so, and we're all not happy. So I think at this point, it's time to call for the vote or call for the motion.
I will move, no, I'll, I'll move, but I'm going to speak to my motion. And that is to say that I am okay with making this vote, but I am not okay waiting three months to talk about doing something different. I'm not okay with waiting for three months. I'm not okay with us talking about hybrid learning, the way that we've been talking about it. There has to be something different. And Omar wanting to vote to June, I don't want to vote to June, but let's be real, we're probably talking about till June. So let's just accept that based on the science that's out there. You know, the Cal State and the CS or the, and the community college, they don't call things lightly. Okay, so let's just, let's just keep it real right now and say, we're probably in this for a year. And so right now, let's turn our attention, let's listen to the teachers. Every teacher who talks to me says, I'm working way too hard. And if we go to hybrid, I'm going to work twice as much and that is not even possible, hybrid classroom. Like we have to start from scratch, please. That is my, I am voting yes for this to please say, start from scratch, not because you haven't done everything you can because you don't work so hard and it's so hard. I don't want to discount anything that you guys do, you know how much I value you, you know how much I respect you. But right now, it's unprecedented times, please, let's act in an unprecedented way. Please, let's take everything off the table and start from scratch. It's too important not to.
I, I want to say I appreciate everything that's been said. And please know that we are grinding on exactly that. We know it has to be different. And so we won't, we haven't been waiting in this time. Anybody who says in the last six months, we haven't been working on solutions and innovating and risking and solutions and innovating, they're crazy because that's all we do. And so what you've done, you've given me, you've given me some more energy around this. And so guy, my team, you know, what I'm hearing is what I preach and that is the sky's the limit, let's go for it. What, what, I mean, we can't get any farther down on the, where we are than now, like what the heck? Let's just go for it. Okay, anyway.
All right, so seconded by, not sure.
There's no motion yet.
Yes, Jenny just made it. Director Close made it.
I motioned to approve and I spoke to my motion, so it's on the floor for a second.
I motioned to approve, and I spoke to my motion, so it's on the floor for a second. A second.
All right, Adina, so we have it moved by Director Close and seconded by Director De La Cruz. Could we have the vote, please?
Director Lopez.
Point of clarification, could you clarify what the motion is for both the minutes and for us to understand what the exact motion might be?
My motion was to accept staff recommendation to stay in distance learning until December 18.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director Close.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
I say this with all appreciation to all the work that's been done.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. That passes. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to come back for public hearing on um, items D, three, four, five, and six. We are missing Director Medina. Director Sheffield. All right, um, we are 10 minutes to closing, unless we get a time extension. Do I have a motion for a time extension? Director Medina.
Move to extend the meeting to 11:00 P. M.
Second.
That was motioned by Director Medina and seconded by Director De La Cruz, I believe. Adina, can we have a vote on that?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director Medina. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Close.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. All right, we're moving to, we have 11 o'clock. Um, we are moving to session, it's a public hearing. Public hearing continuity and attendance plan for Santa Rosa City Schools. Uh, this is a public hearing on the Santa Rosa City Schools Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Dr. Kudimora.
Yes, so um, all you need to do is merely open public hearing, um, and then we'll see who uh, would like to speak.
There's no gavel, but here we go. Public comment, public hearing is open.
So if you'd like to comment for the public hearing on learning continuity and attendance plan for Santa Rosa City Schools, please raise your hand at this time. President Fong, there are no hands raised.
All right, board members, do you have any comments on this? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed on item three for LCA for Return to Learning, Learning Continuity Attendance Plan uh, for Santa Rosa City Schools. We're moving on to the public hearing, Learning Continuity Attendance Plan for the Santa Rosa French American Charter School.
And if you'd like to comment on this public hearing, please raise your hand at the bottom of your screen.
And Lori, can you please state that you're opening public hearing?
The public hearing is now open for the French American Charter School.
And there are no hands raised at this time?
The public hearing for the French American Charter School on the Learning Continuity Plan is closed. Did board members have any comments? All right, we're moving on to uh, D. Five, which is the public hearing, Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for Caesar Chavez Language Academy. Public hearing is now open.
If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
The public comment is now closed. Do board members have any comments? We're moving on to item six, the public hearing, Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for the Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. The public hearing is now open.
If you'd like to comment on this public hearing, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
The public hearing is closed. Board members, comments? We're moving on to item seven, the public hearing for the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts. The public hearing is now open.
There is a hand raised, and it is Marwa Ryan.
Good evening, board. Uh, thank you all for all your work, and um, I again, it's just such a huge task, and I just, I'm very appreciative of all that you do and um, all that you think of to support all of our schools and educators. Um, I am a parent of a child in uh, at the Center as a charter school for the arts, and um, she is a child receiving special education supports. And um, I, I know that everyone is working their hardest, um, but I I, it's, it's special education students, I think, um, are significantly impacted with the distance learning model. And while I'm not necessarily saying that we need to be in person, and I love the idea of the outdoor education, um, I just, I guess I would just like to address um, a little bit of thinking outside the box as we move forward, because I don't know that um, taking a student, say, for example, in in sixth grade who might be reading at a second or third grade level, and, you know, providing um, online supports, I don't know that we're really going to be able to move forward if we're just doing a social advancement. I'm just concerned about these needs of these students being met and um, and just with all the challenges. So I I was looking over the plan. I like all the ideas and everything in theory. I just think sometimes we need to think we may not be able to um, think in our progressive or, you know, just everyone moving forward a grade, you know? I just think we need to think outside the box sometimes and stop being so aligned with, like, just moving forward because of age advancement and maybe just being very individualized and meeting students' needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more comments um, for the public hearing for Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts? President Fong, there are no more hands raised.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Board members, comments on that? Seeing none. We're moving on to the E item. There's a consent item number one. Approval of contract for the purchase of grapes from the Santa Rosa High School Vineyard.
It's a consent item, so the board, since they didn't pull it, just votes on it.
Mm-hmm.
Public comment.
So a public comment, do, does the board have a comment? Is there a public comment on this?
If you'd like to comment on the E1 item about the grapes from Santa Rosa High School Vineyard, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Okay, board members, I call for the um, call for the motion on approval of this contract consent item.
Move to the approval of E1, Approval of Contract for the Purchase of Grapes for the Santa Rosa High School Vineyard.
A second.
Seeing no other discussion, that was moved by Director McCormick and seconded by Director Sheffield. May we have that vote, please?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Close.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we are adjourned.
Oh, wait, don't close it, don't close it.
Dr. Kudimora.
Don't, don't, the board, uh, since the board is all here together, the cabinet and I would like to thank you for the lovely, lovely, lovely surprise yesterday, acknowledging us, and I will tell you, you had for giddy, giggling, jumping up and down, trying to steal each other's stuff out of each other's baskets, because it made us that happy. And so thank you, thank you, thank you for thinking of us.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all that you guys do.
Thanks, you guys.
You do.
Okay, okay, Adina, now we can end.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.